And we are live chair.
Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to this evening, October the 27th of 2021, regular planning commission meeting. I is six o'clock and the planning commission is now in session. Welcome and thank you everyone for joining. My name is Daniel Hubbell. I'm the planning commission chair and tonight's virtual planning commission meeting is being brought to you using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. The Zoom video of this meeting is being broadcast live and will be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel. Deputy Director, CPD Director Alison Van Gorpe and other staff members are participating in tonight's meeting remotely as well. Public audience members who are listening to the meeting online or by telephone. Maybe listening tonight online or via telephone. So welcome to all of you and thank you for joining us. Commissioners, if you could please make sure that your microphones are turned on and City Clerk Andrea Larson will conduct the role.
Thank you Chair, Commissioner Boatsman, President, Commissioner Friedman,
President.
Commissioner Goodman here. Chair Hubbell.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Raisch.
Here.
And Vice Chair Weinberg.
Here.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you Andrea. As I mentioned, we continue to use Zoom and we're not in person. As always, I'll continue to do my best to recognize you in the order in which hands are raised. But please try to get my attention and ask your questions when the time is appropriate. Please, as you have continued to do and show grace, if I do happen to miss you, please just chime in and speak up. With that, we are at appearances where individuals wishing to speak live during our meeting may do so by telephone or via Zoom. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the planning commission on any item. Remarks will be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to individual commission members or staff members. If any person does make personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or becomes boisterous, threatening or personally abusive while addressing the commission, I may request them to leave the meeting. When it is your turn to address the commission, be sure to speak audibly and state your name for the record. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. And according to the city clerk, I have five individuals this evening that have signed up as of this afternoon. And so Andrea, if you wouldn't mind leading us through the list of appearances this evening.
Thank you Chair, our first speaker is Audrey Conver.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Audrey Covernor and I live at 3024 90th Place Southeast Mercer Island. And I'm here tonight to speak in support of the request by congregation Herzl there to me to add our code amendment application to next year's docket. So just by way of introduction, I'm a past president of Herzl near to me and I'm currently cheering the effort to consider how to best use our property. I'm going to allow Anjali Grant, who's an architect, to provide the details of her request when she speaks during her allotted time. I simply want to provide some context to our application. As you can see by the documentation, our request is merely to amend the city code to be consistent with the Mercer Island Comprehensive Plan with respect to what can be built on Zone B property. The comprehensive plan states that schools should be included, but they were left off the list in the code. So currently the list includes things like retail space, theaters, restaurants, gas stations, commercial office space, healthcare services and transitional housing to name a few. So in fact, this is the reason we purchased the parcel. In 1999, we were notified that the then owner intended to sell it to someone who wanted to build a large commercial office building or something similar. And so since the parcel directly abuts our property, we were very concerned that this use, while allowed by code, was disruptive to our use and inconsistent with the feel of the neighborhood. So we took out a loan, assessed fees to our neighbors, to our members, to our neighbors and to our members and enabled us to purchase the property to stop that process. So at this point, we're in need of new classrooms for our students and we, our classrooms are nearing the end of their useful life. Yet as a nonprofit, we struggle to figure out how to raise the money to build new space. So instead, we started looking for partners who could build a small school on Zone B property and share our space. This is when we became aware of the inconsistencies between the code and the comprehensive plan. So we believe that a small school would better fit the neighborhood than many of the other Zone B choices and would like to pursue that direction instead of one of the currently identified uses. So for that reason, we're asking you to support our request to docket our code amendment application to be heard next year. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you very much Audrey.
Thank you Chair, our next speaker is Hoda Mazastrano.
We'll give Hoda one second to come on. There she is.
There. Good evening, everybody. My name is Hoda Mazastrano and our family, the Mazastranos, have lived on the island for three generations now. And we are members of Herzl and their congregation and my boys are all students there. They all attend religious school there weekly. Having spoken to our friends and family in the community, we are in support of this code amendment. We see that it really perpetuates the use that already is being is already on the property. And we especially appreciate the, the care that is being given to preserve the character of the property consistent with the feel of the island. That's important to us. And I'm just here tonight to voice support for the amendments and to ask you to please docket the amendment for here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Chair, our next speaker is Mr. Mark Clausen.
There's Mark.
Unmute. Sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you. Welcome Mark.
Thank you. As you know, my name is Mark Clausen. I live at 6107 Southeast 32nd Street. I've lived here since 1995. I would like to speak concerning a change to the comprehensive plan. I am a member of Neighbors in Motion and that is a bicycle education group on the island. And my comments concern the, the use of the bike ped plan, the bike bicycle pedestrian plan that is, has been periodically updated by the city. We have a number of concerns about the bike ped plan. One of which is that there is no regular schedule for the plan to be updated. I would like for the planning commission to institute a change to the comprehensive plan where that the bike ped plan would be updated every eight years or less if the commission believed that appropriate. I would also like for the, the comp plan to reflect that the the measures that are called for in the bike ped plan, whether it's bike lanes or or facilitating bike usage on the island, that those those measures be implemented within the eight-year cycle of the bike ped plan. So it would formalize more than has been now, the, the improvements to the, the use of bicycles on the island within that eight-year cycle. So that the bike ped plan has concrete recommendations and those concrete recommendations are implemented during that eight-year period. Thank you.
Thank you very much Mark.
And our next speaker is going to be Mr. Matt Goldbach.
There he is. Good evening, Mr. Goldbach. You're still on mute.
Matt, you're still muted.
How about, there you go, perfect. Okay, I said I have a number of comments on the package in general. And I'll be go try and try and do them as quickly as I can. To start with, suggestion one, two and five. The all three of which were submitted beyond after the required date. And I actually believe that you should not consider those because there was a specified timeframe that we all had to adhere to. These were not adhered to. And consequently, I think they should be not considered. Having said that, I think number one from Commissioner Boatsman is a very good, very good suggestion. I just feel that considering it right now would be somewhat prejudicial for a commissioner that was late. Moving, moving from there, number three in your, in your list. I just don't understand. So I'm going to leave that one to you guys because I didn't quite understand what that was about. Number four, which is the, the applicant, the Herzl that wants to change the the text on the B business, business zone. There are, there are three places on the island that are business. If you change one, you change them all unless you're trying to do a spot zone, which I can't imagine that's the case. So I think the consideration has to be much greater than what they're talking about. Number two, I think the reason that schools are specifically schools, private and public omitted from B, Zone B, was they were meant to be low-density things such as the whole South End Shopping Center and the current Bs. Specifically, the Herzl acquired this property so that it wouldn't be developed. And I think that is the, the neighbors were all in favor of that. I think if you change that right now, you're going to have another kind of CFZ revolution from the community surrounding Herzl and just about every commuter that uses East Mercer still have not resolved the traffic situation on East Mercer from the CFZ. And I don't think anybody wants to get back into the CFZ again. So that's my, my thoughts on number four. Quickly. I concur with the CPD on the number six. I think that's a building code shouldn't be considered right now. Items seven through 10 and including 12, all of the amendments from Mr. Thompson on the residential code. And these, some of these things were actually submitted at the last cycle. And exactly the same reasons given not to consider them because we still haven't done the, the review of the residential code, which I think should have been done in 2019. It was kicked to 20, we're in 21 and now the CPD is saying we're going to take a look at it in 22. What Thompson's proposing with things to fix primarily things that were broken by the DSG, which is now the CPD. And I think at some point, we're going to have to come to some kind of review of the residential code before we basically we have, we have docketing and we just refuse to docket anything. Can I say anything else left here? The the bike, the bike plan that Commissioners Boatsman and what's his name? Hi there. I, I think this, I think it's a good thing. I think the issue though is that we really have no idea what's going to happen with sound transit. It's pretty confusing. COVID has made it even more confusing. I think trying to legislate around that might, might be wrong. On the other hand, putting it on the comp plan might be a good idea. I, I probably have to go along with you guys on that. On items 14 through 16, these are the items that are mandated by the state. I suggest everybody hold their nose and sign those. I don't know how else you can do that there. You don't have any choice. I think other than, other than you might make some comments on that to the council, hoping that they will go to the, the state to try and correct those things because they're not going to be, none of those will be good for us. And with that, I wish you all a good evening.
Thank you Matt. Appreciate your comments.
And our next speaker will be Mr. Jim Stanton.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay.
Did you want to turn on your camera Jim?
Oh, sure.
Just if you'd like.
No, I'll take off my bathroom.
If we have to, then you know.
Anyway, I'm Jim Stanton. I live at 7812 Southeast 78th Street. We've lived here since 1985. I'd like to comment on amendments two and 13. I saw amendment two, I share, oh, I'm sorry. I'm also a member of Neighbors in Motion, which works to make bicycling safer and pedestrian facilities safer on Mercer Island. On item two, I see there was an objection to it. I, I support the spirit of it. But also note that the state Wash Dot has issued a new active transportation plan. Part one is out, part two is in draft. And one of the things it calls for is making our road a, a concept of level of service to accommodate the least capable cyclist. And I hope the planning commission and the city will review this Wash Dot plan and incorporate the relevant issues into our own plans here. I do want to echo on item 13. What Mark Clausen said. If you look at the plan in 19, the bike ped plan of 1996 and 2010, they're not really plans. There are no priorities. There are no schedules. There's no way of measuring what's been done. The 2010 plan spent a lot of time trying to figure out what had been done since the 1996 plan. Evidently it wasn't tracked, but there was certainly no commitment in either one of those plans to priorities and accomplishing things within a set period of time. So I like the idea if we're going to have plans to have them periodically and to accomplish what they set out to do within the time period envisioned. Thank you.
Thank you Jim.
That was the last of our speakers tonight Chair.
Excellent. Well, I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time to call in. I know that this is a different format than having you in person, but it is very nice to see people staying engaged and providing their feedback and input. So thank you again very much for everyone who has taken the time this evening to address the commission. That brings us to the first item of regular business, which is the review and consideration of approval for the minutes of October 20th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Weinberg. Is there a second?
Second, second.
I've got like five seconds.
It's the race to unmute yourself.
I know that's the I, I heard Victor's voice first, so we'll give the second to Victor. Are there any corrections or updates to the minutes? All right, hearing none. We'll have the clerk do a roll call vote Andrea.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair Weinberg.
Hi.
Commissioner Boatsman, yes. Commissioner Goodman, hi. Commissioner Raisch.
I'm.
Commissioner Friedman.
Hi.
Chair Hubbell.
I.
And Commissioner Murphy.
Hi.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Excellent. That brings us to our second and only other item on this evening's agenda, which is review of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan and Development Code Amendment Preliminary Docket Items. And I will hand it over to Alison Van Gorpe, our CPD Deputy Director. And she will walk us through the process and do a quick presentation. Alison.
Thank you Chair. Just let me share my screen really quick. I'm just going to go through my first couple of slides and then we're going to give some time, five minutes per person to a few of the folks that suggested docket items and let them speak to their suggestion for, for up to five minutes. All right, so get this thing started. Um, I just wanted to remind you all kind of how the process works for docketing. First of all, it's our annual opportunity for the public to propose comprehensive plan and development code amendments. And tonight you all will be conducting the preliminary review of the proposed items and making a recommendation to the city council. The city council's meeting at their meeting in December, December 7th, I believe. And they will be selecting the, the items that are placed on the final docket and then those will become the work plan for CPD and, and for the commission next year. So one more thing here, just kind of the procedural stuff. So public notice was given in August by the September 1st deadline and amendment requests were due by October 1st. And I just wanted to give a teeny bit of clarity around that since a couple of the submissions were late. The, the public notice stated that the submissions that come in by 5:00 PM on the first and the code actually says that any applications that are received after October 1st cannot be docketed for the following year. They must be held back for the next cycle. So I think that applies to, to one of our submissions, the one, number five from Ray Liaw was received just a couple of weeks ago. I think it was the 15th or 16th of October. So it was, it was definitely after October 1st. The other two from numbers one and two from Ms. Boatsman were received on October 1st. It was after 5:00 PM, but I think based on the code language, they would still be acceptable to docket.
Alison, can I ask a point of clarification there?
Yes.
My understanding of having gone through this process in other cities and I, and, and so I'm not sure how the supplies here, the, the commission, this member board, however, is at liberty if we came up with a 17th item that we wanted to add and we agreed to it this evening. There's nothing that's restricting this body as a whole from adding anything that it wishes to, to the, to the docket. Is that correct? Or does, in this case, we have commissioners that are submitting items. Is that because that's the way that our process requires it? Or as a commission, are we as a body able to come to an agreement on anything we want to add?
Well, what I understand from the code and it is a little gray on your specific question, but it says that things must be submitted for the docket by the deadline, you know, through that standard process. But it also says that the city council, the planning commission or staff can suggest or bring forward a code amendment at any time. So I don't think that you could choose to docket additional items tonight, but you could make a separate recommendation for a code amendment that would stand alone, I guess. I believe that's, that's possible at any time based on the way the code's written.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for that clarification and, and different jurisdictions. I've done this in, they had different rules. So I just wanted to make sure we were following that. I see quickly Victor has his hand up for a question, I'm assuming. You're muted still.
And actually I, I had a question, but now I have an additional question based on, on your response. So number one, where, where did that five o'clock deadline on October 1st come from? Was that published somewhere?
It was published in the notice, the public notice for the opportunity to submit docket requests. And I believe that was just an administrative decision by the staff when we, when we drafted the notice.
And is there an attorney on the call that can, can kind of give us a reading on code, what's in the code versus what was in the notice?
There's not an attorney on the call, but I did speak with the city attorney about this issue in advance of the meeting. And his advice or his direction was that based on the reading of the code, any applications received by the for October 1st, inclusive of numbers one and two could, could be docketed. Anything received after October 1st should not be docketed.
Yeah. And then just to follow up to your answer regarding this commission being able to add docketed, additional docketed items. How does, I, I, I'm, I'm unclear as to why that's possible and, and why, why we have to eliminate. I can't, I, I don't, I don't have the one in front of me. I think it was item number five. Which came in on the 15th and how is that different?
Well, there's two separate tracks within the code. There's this docketing process and then for code amendments only, not comp plan amendments. The council or the planning commission or the staff could bring forward a code amendment at any time. They're, they're given that power separately from the docket process.
Thank you.
When are you ready Alison?
I think at this point I'm going to unshare and let's go ahead and hear from, I believe there's three folks that submitted docket requests that would like to speak to their request and I'll ask Andrea to, to help introduce them.
Thank you Alison. The first person speaking for their request is Callie Rodolphy.
Okay, there it looks like I'm on.
You are welcome.
First of all, I'm Callie Rodolphy. I've been living on Mercer Island for about 20, over 28 years now. And I did spend some time on the utility board as well as the design commission. So I just want you to know that I really appreciate the work the commissioners are doing. I know it's difficult work. It's very detail oriented many times and I'm sure you're up late nights doing research and doing the work that is so beneficial to the city. And I also wanted to thank you very much for your leadership in, you know, the comp plan amendments you've made in the past, inclusion of climate action planning and also setting some goals for reduction of greenhouse gases for our city. Climate action is going to take many forms. And in our city's case, Mercer Island, the city operations account for about 2% of our carbon emissions. And as it stands, 98% of our carbon emissions are really coming from the residents, the businesses on Mercer Island, primarily buildings and transportation. And so fortunately, with the city's leadership, they have made significant strides in reducing carbon emissions from city operations. In fact, I believe the city is 100% clean energy now at this point. But we've got the other 98% of our Mercer Islands emissions to work on now. And it's going to be a challenge, but it also provides a lot of opportunities. I'm speaking today to you on docket item number six, which is about requiring electrification for heat sources for future commercial and also multifamily residential development. And why I think this is really important now is because we can benefit from electrification of future development in, for example, the town center by amending the development codes as soon as possible. codes as soon as possible. It's, again, it's going to take many different efforts to reduce our carbon emissions, including working on transportation. But the county's work, King County's work here in this area, and the work they've done to develop a climate action toolkit for cities, has recommended that in terms of the green building sector, we can get the biggest bang for the buck if we look at electrifying or putting in clean energy sources in future development of larger buildings. It, it's a kind of a low resource. It takes very few resources to do this kind of action for the biggest benefit overall in carbon reduction. So, thank you for considering docket item number six, and I look forward to working with you in the future on ways we can meet those goals you've set in the comp plan for climate action and reduction of greenhouse gases.
Great. Thank you very much, Kelly, for coming this evening.
Our next speaker is Angela Grant.
Hello.
Hi. Can you all see me? Yeah.
We can, and we can hear you.
Great. My name is Angela Grant. I'm an architect, working with the Herzl-Nerthamid community. I'd like to start by just sharing my screen briefly. Looks like I can do that. Great. So, I'm going to give a brief overview, and then touch on a couple of points. The overview is that the Mercer Island Comprehensive Plan designates a commercial office zone. That's shown here. They circle these, these three areas that have this kind of checkerboard pattern. So, those were established as part of the Comprehensive Plan, and they allowed and defined use, a variety of uses that were meant to be compatible with the residential character of the neighborhood, including public and private schools. The implementing zoning designation for this, this commercial office zone is CO and B in the comp plan. In the Mercer Island Municipal Code, however, the B zoning does not have public and private schools permitted. So, we're asking that the municipal code be amended to be consistent with the comp plan and to permit schools in the B zone. I'm going to stop share. I don't think we need to look at those anymore. I wanted to touch on, there was a comment about density. We are not looking to change the density of this zone. Under the B zone, it's three stories is allowed, a 10-foot setback on a right-of-way, but we are not looking to change that. In fact, we are trying to find a use that would be less dense than what is currently permitted. So, I just want to make that clear. And also to note that in the, the comp plan, public and private schools are specifically noted as uses that are compatible with the residential character of the island. As Audrey spoke, this amendment is going to, is being requested by Herzl-Nerthamid. The synagogue purchased a parcel of land which was B-zoned in order to protect and preserve the residential character of their neighborhood. Herzl would like to be able to develop that parcel in a way that's consistent with the values and character of their institution, and compatible with the residential character of the area. They're currently in preliminary conversations with one small school. This is an independent inquiry. It is not related to any other development on the island, or with any other zoning efforts, the CFC notwithstanding. And this is to really to support Herzl's future. We understand that there's pressure on planning staff right now with limited time and resources. You have a lot to do this year. To that end, we met with planners prior to application to determine how we can include as much background information and research as possible, so that we can reduce the amount of staff, time, staff would need to spend on the issue, and kind of set it up so that all of the information required is there. We've included all of that background in our proposal. Finally, Herzl-Nerthamid would like to be a good neighbor to the community. To that end, a public meeting has been set for November 9th to get feedback and input from the neighbors, and to understand what their issues might be. To be honest, we understood that this docketing process was going to happen in December. So, the November meeting was set in order to prepare for a December public docketing process. So, the original intent was to do our meetings with the neighbors prior to this process, but we'll catch up. In summary, we would like to ask the Commission for your support to bring the uses within the B zone into alignment with the Comprehensive Plan. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is going to be Mina Laban.
Hello, Mina. Good evening. Hi, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to participate here. My name is Mina Laban, and I live at 8371 Southeast 31st Street here on Mercer Island. And I'm here to speak tonight about item number four, which was suggested by Attorney Ray Lea. I will present this by basically reading my notes, I think, just so that I stay on the point and not waste any time. We just recently bought our property at Ten Brook Bay, which is a house, and a little stream runs through the property. This lovely little nature, natural feature, basically, the stream, is one of the reasons we fell in love with the house and the property. Because the house is very dated and has had a few iterations, we purchased it with a desire to remodel it, limited to enclosing one component of the house, and no closer than the existing footprint relative to the stream. Also, the house needs roof replacement, deck replacement, and interior remodel. But the roadblock we hit under the current code is that it prohibits any potential expansion of homes located within the majority of the buffer, meaning the creek buffer. Our home is located within the majority of the creek, so we have only considered modest changes. For example, we have a roofed staircase at the front of the house, which is currently enclosed by three walls, and is only open towards our front deck and driveway. And I will present, if I can share the screen, just an image of that, because it will help you understand what I'm talking about. We're just looking to move the front door from the top of the stair to the bottom, so you can enter the house on the ground level and not on the first story up. However, we learned from the city planners that adding this wall to our existing covered area, to our existing covered area, is still considered an expansion. Please know, we care for nature and natural environment here on Mercer Island, which is one of the reasons we love it here, and the citizens who support all of that. And by no means would we want to be the ones harming it. That's why we went ahead and hired a city-approved wetland biologist to evaluate and provide a report on whether or not enclosing our staircase would in any way harm the creek. Their report came back without any concern as to the impact on the stream. However, the city code, as it relates to critical area, currently does not allow the city to accept evidence from a scientist to make an exception for houses like ours that sit in the majority of the buffer. We suggested a code amendment that would be meaningful for us and neighbors like us, to give us an opportunity to make modest changes to non-conforming homes that may be due for repairs and/or for remodel. I would like to close out by saying that we were hoping to get an opportunity to demonstrate to the city that modest remodels as ours do not always adversely impact critical areas, and by revising the code as proposed, we would be given a chance to legally, under the code, make these small changes as we remodel. We're disappointed that the city will not docket our proposal, just because we found out about this process two weeks too late, and I know you just addressed that, so thank you. But we hope that the staff and the planning commission, as well as the City Council, will find ways to address this situation before 2023, as we're hoping and planning to start a remodel soon. I would like to share my screen briefly. Missing something here.
Don't feel bad. As many times as I've done this over the last year and a half, I can never do it right.
Everything's set up, but I guess not. Am I sharing it or no?
I'm still not seeing it, no.
Okay.
There we go.
There you go. Okay, so basically, this is a diagram, as you can see the outline of our house, and this is where the creek, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but this is where the creek goes adjacent to the house. Driveway goes over it. And then this is basically the area I am talking about, and let me just clear the page. So, basically, this little inset area is right here, in a clear picture, this staircase that's, you know, already enclosed by three sides. The entryway is up on the top floor. It's roofed right now, and what we were hoping to do is just close this wall here, basically, to have a door entrance on the front, you know, on the ground level. Basically, that's, that's the gist of it. So, I hope that helps.
That does. Thank you very much.
Sharing. Okay, there you go. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening, everyone.
Great. Thank you very much, Mina.
That was Oliver Speaker's chair.
Thank you, Andrea. Alison, back to you.
All right, I'm going to reshare and continue my presentation. All right. I think I spoke about these issues already. Oh, I spoke about the first one here, in terms of the timeliness of when the proposals were received. I did not yet speak about this second item. I wanted to mention this upfront as well. So, the docketing process is limited to development code amendments, and, you know, things related to the building code or, or other parts of the city code are not eligible to be, to be docketed. Of course, you know, proponents of those proposals could definitely speak with the Commission or the City Council. I think, in most cases, the City Council would be the appropriate venue, because if they're outside the purview of Title 19, the Planning Commission would not have a role in, in reviewing the proposal. And the City Council could take up those type of code amendments as they wish. I've got the quote, or the citation here on the screen, just, you know, where this comes from in the Growth Management Act, basically authorizes us only to docket items related to development regulations. All right. And so then I wanted to quickly go over the criteria that are included in the code for adding things to the docket. So, I'll just do this quickly. It should be a matter that's appropriately, appropriately addressed through the Comprehensive Plan or the code. The city has the resources, including staff and budget, necessary to review the proposal. The proposal does not raise issues that are more appropriately addressed by an ongoing work program item. The proposal will serve the public interest by implementing goals of the Comprehensive Plan or a new approach that supports the city's vision. And essential elements of the proposal have not been considered in the last three years, and the City Council can waive that time limit if they wish. I see a hand up from Victor.
Go ahead, Victor.
Yeah, just a few points of clarification. The first one, on item two, CPD, I think of CPD as kind of a bucket, and there's a limited amount that you can put in that bucket. Can we get an indication? And so, in, in addition to that, I think you've got three items that are, that you've got to deal with by state law. Can I get an idea of how big the bucket is after you deal with those three items?
Yes, there we go. I was trying to find the right slide. My next slide speaks to this issue. So, we are expanding our staff, or rebuilding our staff a bit, since the reductions that happened back in June of 2020. We've just hired a senior long-range planner who's going to be starting November 15th, so here in a few weeks, and will be helping me with the long-range and legislative work that we've been undertaking. So, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Code Amendments, and other work along those lines. So, we will have a bit more staff capacity from what we had this year. But that said, I think there's other practical limitations on how much we can do. One being, the Commission, the Planning Commission, needs to review most of this work, and, you know, there's a limit on how many meetings you have scheduled in a year, somewhere around 20 meetings, if you were to meet twice a month, with the exception of August and December. So, you know, we just need to think through how many items we could get through in a year on the Commission, and then as well for the council's schedule. I know, you know, the Comprehensive Plan periodic update will be starting on that in earnest next year. There'll be some scoping work in the first quarter, quarter and a half of the year, but then I think we'll begin in earnest with community outreach and beginning to review, you know, draft language and potential updates to different sections of the, of the comp plan. And the, the Planning Commission will be the, the body for, for doing that work, for hosting public engagement, and for actually reviewing the code link, or the comp plan language. So, that'll be a substantial piece of work next year. I would imagine it could easily take half of the meetings that we have available, which would leave, you know, maybe 10, 12 other meetings for other topics. Like you already said, we have the three issues that are state mandated. They may not take a ton of time, but, you know, every, every item we look at tends to take three conversations with the Commission. At least that's how we've been doing it this year, and it seems to have worked out reasonably well. In addition, we have three items on the 2021 docket that I don't anticipate us completing this year that will carry over into next year. So, the transportation, park and fire impact fees, I've been working on that in the background in terms of updating the rate studies for the transportation and park fees. But I think there may be some small changes needed to the code to support some of the updates we want to do. So, that may come back next year. And then we have two of the amendment proposals from the community, the one related to lighting and noise, and the one related to permit types and noticing. I believe we'll begin on those later this year in November and December, but I don't believe we'll be finished with them, and we'll need to complete the work on them in January and February. And finally, the residential development standards analysis, we, we heard from a couple of our speakers at the beginning of the meeting about that. It, it has been, you know, kind of waiting out there for the city to take up a review and analysis of the effect of, of the code amendments that were undertaken in 2017, and we are planning to do that work in 2022. And so, there'll be an analytical component the staff are working through to look at, you know, what was the effect of these regulatory changes? Did it impact the size and design of houses that are built, the trees that are protected, et cetera? And we'll be reporting back to the Commission and the Council on that information, and the Council then make a determination on whether they would like to pursue further code amendments related to the And the council then make a determination on whether they would like to pursue further code amendments related to those findings. Um, so all that said, there's a lot of big work items that we already have slated for 2022. And there is some room left in the bucket for other things, but I would say not a lot of room.
So from a practical perspective, what does that mean? And because I I was counting, and I think you rattled off 10 things there.
That sounds about right.
You got three, three state mandated, three carries over from last year. And I think there's about four items that are part of the residential uh, code review. So I counting 10.
Okay.
How many more items are we able to take on from this list that we have in front of us?
Yeah, I mean, I can't say definitively because, you know, each one has a different size and scope. And you know, I don't know exactly how much time it would take. But you know, my guess, my gut feeling is somewhere like three, maybe, maybe five. I don't know, but
That's a big number.
Three feels, you know, maybe, okay. Um, and the the final point I had on this slide is that items added to the docket are going to remain on the docket until a decision is made. So just like we're seeing this year, there's items in the docket that we haven't gotten to yet, or we won't complete by the end of the year. They will remain on the docket. We can continue to work on them next year. So if there's items that were docketed for 2022, and we didn't have time to complete them, they would, you know, roll forward to the next year.
But but in those scenarios, you're effectively developing debt. Work, let's say, work.
And you can definitely get in a situation where these things build up. And you get an unreasonable number of things in the docket, and it can take you years to get out from under that. I know our interim director, Jeff Thomas, has definitely spoken to me about situations like that that he's experienced in other cities where you get kind of like a five year backlog of docketed items. And you've got to, you know, stop docketing and then just slog through that for a while.
Okay, it's in, unfortunately, that was only my first question. If you go back, if you go back a slide, I think to back to the slide that we're here.
There we go.
So you've got five criteria here. Are these the only criteria that we're using to evaluate these docket items? Or are we also going to be talking about, for instance, merits of the proposal? Uh, or are we just going to be looking at whether we think that regardless of the merits, this is worthy of a discussion by the council? Or is there some other criteria that we need to be evaluating on tonight?
Well, the criteria here on the screen is what the code dictates should be considered by the commission and the council when they're determining what should go onto the docket. Um, I think it would be natural to discuss the merits of the proposals as well. Um, but you don't really need to make a decision on that tonight. We don't need to decide, is this a good proposal or a bad proposal? We just need to decide, should this proposal get further consideration and review?
Because it's docketed. Because it meets all five criteria.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, the thing I would add to this, Victor, and that's a great question that I was going to go here myself. Um, and you've teed it up well. I think at a minimum, it needs to meet these five criteria um, to be considered. And then let's say we have budget for three things, and we have eight that meet four of these five. The subjective one is number two. So that's where we say, well, we've got the budget and resources for three, but there's five that are not going to meet criteria number two. And so um, and then we can say, you know, maybe there's a handful that that don't meet a certain number of these criteria that that can be eliminated. And so it's a, at a minimum, it has to meet these. And then the subjective part is number two, which is where do we find the the resource budget in order to to complete them? If that makes sense.
Thank you.
That's the difficult part we have is we were going to have to do a prioritization exercise. Carolyn.
Yep. One idea I would submit to the commission for consideration is that, you know, when you have a list of 15 things, you're considering and wondering if you have the resources to deal with 15 things. That's a different discussion than dealing with a list which has already been winnowed. So I feel like as we go through things, we could save some time for ourselves if we briefly consider how big of a deal it is to deal with a particular proposed docket item. But in effect, winnow the list and then make another pass at what's left and then consider whether there is staff and budget to deal with those items.
Everybody tonight is foreshadowing Allison, who was planning to propose that exact exercise, Carolyn. So I think that's perfect.
Yep. Okay, so let me, let me just go on to that next slide then. So the process that I would submit that we use to go through and evaluate these proposals is kind of a two stage process. So first here, I'll go through each item. And I'd like to give you all a chance to give a thumbs up to an item. A thumbs up would indicate, if we have a majority of thumbs up from the commission, it would indicate that that item should immediately move to the item, to the list of recommended amendments. And it should, it should move forward. Um, if there's not a majority of thumbs up, we will come back to that item for further discussion later on in the meeting. Um, so this will help us quickly figure out, you know, which items definitely have a majority of support, and we want to move them forward. And then which items we need to talk about more. And we'll have a second round of voting on those once we've discussed them. And then after we go through those two rounds of doing the thumbs up, we will have, you know, some number of items on the recommendation list, and then we'll do a final roll call vote to approve that recommendation. Does that make sense?
Carolyn.
Um, the only thing I would suggest perhaps in addition to what you've you've proposed there is there seem to be some items on our list which we can't, we simply can't do it. Well, wait a second. Um, let me back up. Um, here's a question I have. A number of the proposals, a lot of them have to do with amending the develop residential development standards or the tree code or any, you know, things that are already in our work plan for 2022 because we're going to be doing the residential design standards or development standards. So I don't know whether to save thumbs up for something like that. You know, I I might be in favor of it in concept. But if it's already going to be done, i- is it possible that we should just make a decision here and now about those six or seven things and how they should be treated?
I think you would have a couple of options there. Um, you could docket those items and I, you know, as staff, we would have to determine, should we consider them separately on their own merit? Or, you know, loop that into the bigger conversation that's happening um, on the residential development standards and and take care of them that way. Um, or you could choose to not docket them and have some kind of a additional recommend accompanying recommendation that goes with the docket and says, you know, we did not docket these items, but we would like to recommend that the council consider these ideas as part of the RDS work or something like that.
Does it create more work for the staff if they are actually docketed when we will be working on that particular development standard?
It's a good question. I think if things are docketed, they must be reviewed by the commission. And a recommendation needs to go to council, and the council needs to make a decision on what they're going to do about it. You know, they can decide not to do an amendment, but it needs to be processed to make the decision. Um,
I think there's some procedural things as well, right, Allison? Like as far as we have to, if I recall, we have to do public hearings separately based on that.
Yeah, I I would have to review the code to see, you know, what we have to do, an individual public hearing for each suggestion, or could those be combined? I'm not sure about the answer to that. Um, we also do things like we do a SEPA checklist. We provide notification to the Department of Commerce. Like, there's a bunch of procedural steps that kind of happen behind the scenes. So there's a considerable amount of work and time that goes into each amendment that goes on to the docket.
All right. Thank you. I think I think that might um, work just the way you've said to just first just consider. Yeah.
Yeah, so let me summarize. Uh, let me summarize what I what I've heard, Allison, and uh, uh, maybe slightly tweak it. I think there are going to be a number of these that, and I think there are going to be a number of questions as well. Um, if you're of, we're going to go through these one by one. If you're in agreeance that you believe that it meets the criteria, then you're going to vote yes. If you believe that it doesn't, then we'll vote no. And if there's a majority, no, we'll just remove it from the table. And if there's a like, hey, I don't, I'm not going to vote yes or no now. You're just like, hey, I can't make a decision yet. Those are the ones that we're going to come back to if we don't have a majority. And we'll come back to them and then discuss, either ask questions or discuss the merits of of inclusion. Um, and that way we can either eliminate some and or just sort of move some through to the main list. And then we'll come back to the handful that I'm expecting. We'll come back to have some discussion around. Does that sound logical to everybody from a process perspective? I'm seeing thumbs up and head nods. Allison, does that, sorry, Ted, go ahead.
So clarification question. So the first round is essentially just to discuss all of the Roman numeral items except for number two, which is, do we have the bandwidth or the capacity to do all this? The second round is to talk about capacity, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm with it.
All right, let's proceed. So I've got a quick summary of each amendment that I'll go through. And I think after I finish speaking to that each one, let's do the thumbs up kind of as we go, so we don't forget which is which. Um, okay, so this first one was proposed by Commissioner Boatsman. It is related to the tree code. And it, right now, we have a tree retention requirement for 30% of the existing trees. She's proposing we increase it to 50%. Um, this is related to things that were amended as part of RDS back in 2017. I'll just say that. Um, and I I think this proposal would result in additional tree retention, although kind of the flip side of that coin is that it would make, you know, the development of houses on on tree covered properties more difficult. It would probably limit the size and configuration of of a home that could be built or or remodeled.
Was there a, was there a staff recommendation here, Allison?
Um, you know, I'm not really making staff recommendations this year. I think, you know, I can give you some of my sense of whether things are a good idea or not, maybe. But like with this one, and there's a few of them where it's really, you know, sort of a policy decision from this, the city leadership on whether you would want to do this. I think there's pros and cons to it, which I spoke to briefly. Um,
All right, uh, Mike, you had a question?
Um, well, I just had a comment because um, reading the lot of the material, it sounds like this is really directed to situations where there are only a few trees. Um, and I wonder if if there's a way to deal with this with that issue in a different way than making a blanket 50% retention.
Well, uh, so, uh, great question. Let's get to, are there four people that think just on the merits of writing this that we can, that we want to put it on the docket? Um, yes or no? And if there's not, then we'll come back and we'll have further discussion to that point.
So we just raise our hands then?
Raise your hand or thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Okay, I've got four. Victor, was that a thumbs up? Okay, I've got four. Okay.
Just one question, I may.
Yes.
So if we have voted for in favor, does that mean we don't need to come back and talk about it again?
That's correct. It means that we've agreed that we're going to put it on the docket, and it'll move forward as a recommendation to the council.
Okay, so my only, my only concern about this one is that this is just like Dan Thompson's recommendations, which are all going to be part of the review of the developed residential development standards, which includes the tree code. So this is another one of the, so maybe we can make that decision later, how to handle all of those docket requests that are part of the residential design standards, because there's probably about six or seven of them. Okay, that's enough said about that, but thank you.
Clear. I'm sorry.
So we'll go Victor and then Tiffen.
I I actually didn't realize that uh, this was just taking it straight to the docket process, so I'm going to withdraw my thumbs up on it.
Yeah, so yeah, I I sensed that there was confusion there. If you feel like it's something we need to discuss more, and it's like in a, hey, I'm not sure how we want to prioritize it, don't vote for it. We're going to come back and then we'll go through it in that process. This is just going to be a quick, yep, all the things are there, like there's three I know we're going to say yes to. Those are the legal ones that we have to go to. There may be a couple more. But we just want to get a quick sense of what are the ones that we need to talk about, one of the ones that we don't need to talk about real quick, and then we'll just come back. Ted?
Yeah, I think that covers my question. So I, if we uh, if we have four or more thumbs up on any of these, then essentially it's in the docket. And if there's uh, if it doesn't get four thumbs up, then we still discuss it and might still get in the docket. But we have to essentially figure out, do I have the capacity for it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Mike?
Yeah, I I'm in the same boat as Victor. I I would change my vote, knowing that we can come back and talk about it.
Great.
Okay.
All right, so we'll come back to number one.
Mm hmm. Okay, so number two, also from Commissioner Boatsman. It's related to the comprehensive plan capital facilities element. And it would add a new policy requiring the adoption of impact fees to help finance implementation of the city's pedestrian bicycle facilities plan. Um, the comments I had on this one were related to state law. Um, so so state law specifically prohibits cities from putting taxes or fees on development except as were authorized by the state. And there's some specific authority for impact fees, but just for specific purposes. Streets and roads, schools, parks and rec and open space and fire protection. Um, and so the issue here is we already have a transportation impact fee. And it provides funding for streets and roads, and that includes multimodal things like bike lanes, sidewalks, other things that are within the the public right of way. Um, and so, you know, generally, we're we're not authorized to do an impact fee that's just for bike and pedro improvements alone. Um, but we, but we are able to include it in the transportation impact fee that we already have, and we are doing that.
Okay, do we have any consensus that this should move forward immediately, or should we come back and talk about it? Anyone in favor of just moving it forward? Okay, we'll come back and talk about it.
Okay, um, the proposal number three is from Sarah Fletcher, also related to the comprehensive plan, the transportation element. And in the transportation element, there was a chart of different intersections um, that were categorized. Some were town center intersections, some were outside of town center. And she noticed that two of the intersections in the the town center category um, were actually located just outside the town center. They are on North Mercer Way, which is, you know, just just north of I-90 and across across I-90 from the town center. And so her recommendation is that these two intersections should be moved to the outside of town center portion of the chart.
Victor?
Um, on this one, any chance that this is just a Scrubner's error that doesn't need to go through a
It's not. The proposer asked that um, prior to submitting it. And I think it is a substantive issue because the location in this chart is related to the required level of service for those intersections, which um, is definitely substantive.
Thank you.
Great, Ted?
Yeah, I I think on this one, uh, it it's a a good proposal. It's very accurate that uh, what what the uh, what Sarah was saying is accurate, that the uh, the uh, it's not being called the right thing. Um, I think if we were to move it to outside of town center, then it essentially means it's no longer required to get to level of service C, we send the level of service D, which essentially means that we're lowering lowering the quality or the or the level of services required for these intersections. So I, I think rather than moving it to a different category, we might want to consider renaming the existing category that's in to say town center and adjacent or town center and near or something like that. So they can stay in the service D, but that's gets the deliberations, I guess.
Yeah, I, fair enough. And while I'm sure have a protracted conversation about it in the end. Are there four people that believe that this meets the criteria that we want to move it forward directly to the docket?
Yeah, I, I think it's an easy one.
Yeah, basically, basically meaning this is something that we should take up a review of next year, not necessarily that you're in favor of, but it warrants being on the agenda to have a consideration. Okay.
I had my hand up, but I took it down. So just to be clear, I'm not sure.
I still see four, which is enough. So let, we'll go ahead and, and have that, add that to the recommended docket.
All right, proposed amendment four is the one from Hertel Neer to Mead. And we heard quite a bit about this already this evening, but it would affect the business zone. And it would add public and private schools to the list of allowed uses in the business zone.
So the question here is, does it meet the criteria? And do you believe it's something that warrants our attention and time to discuss whether or not you agree with or not the proposal? Do you, do I have four that believe that this is something that we should take up as a discussion? Okay, I have four.
Okay, moving on to proposed amendment five. This was proposed by Ray Leah. And it's the other one that we heard from the, one of the proponents of this evening. It relates to the critical areas regulations. And it would allow additions to nonconforming, single family homes located in wetland or water course buffers when there's no net loss to critical area functions and values. So while the staff think this is probably a good idea, unfortunately, this request was received after the deadline on October fifteenth. And so it's not eligible to be considered for this year's docket.
I would concur with that assessment. Let me ask this, and, and we can either come back and discuss this or not. But as a, as an alternative, I think the with the movement that we take this for the, when the docket goes, I think, Allison, you mentioned that we could recommend that this be brought up as a separate code amendment outside of this process. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think you have the ability to make an accompanying recommendation that, you know, this code amendment has merit. And while it can't be docketed, perhaps the council should consider moving it forward separately.
Okay. Knowing that we cannot put it on the docket based on the rules. Do we have a consensus of four people that believe that this should be moved forward as an alternate recommendation? Victor, did you have a question?
Before I vote, I, I just, I would like some assurance that the homeowner has some other recourse other than waiting eighteen months to get a.
I don't think they do. I don't, they would not be able to do what she described in terms of closing that stairway. They would not be able to do that under the existing regulations.
And there's no, no way to get them a variance?
I don't know the specific details of this. I think if there were a way to get a variance, I see Tim jumping on, he might want to speak to it, but a variance process is extremely difficult. And there's a very high bar to achieve, to be able to receive a variance from the hearing examiner. Tim, do you want to speak to that a little more?
Sure. So variances are only to numerical standards in the code. And the variance section specifically does not authorize variances to chapter nineteen dot oh seven, which is where the critical area regulations are contained. So variances don't apply to critical area regulations. So that's, that's the conundrum that people find themselves in with this. We're working with the property owners to try to figure a way through the code. But this particular regulation has affected many, many other properties since the regular critical area regulations were adopted in twenty nineteen. And it's, it's a very tricky set of language to try to interpret our way through, which is why we're supportive of, of the code amendment.
Victor, did that answer your question?
Kind of. I'm, I'm, I I'm, 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 I'm a big concern for the homeowner. I mean, I, I think they made a a relatively compelling case and I'm, I'm just not, I'm not sure what's being proposed here. I, I, I see what's being proposed on the screen, but in terms of what is their recourse? They, they, they have something that they would like to improve upon and they don't have a way to do it. And now they need to wait eighteen months.
So I think the recourse, as I understand it, is one of two options. We can wait and review this as a part of the docketing process next year. Or we can make a recommendation to council that this be brought forward as a separate code amendment, as we do frequently do look at and have the council outside of the docketing process, move this to our work item later this year when they, the, the council will have a final approval on our work plan. And when they review that work plan for us, this is something that we could recommend that they add for next year, which would be quicker than that eighteen month cycle you're referring to. You. Carolyn?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of trying to not discuss things because I'm sort of in the mode of, you know, if we can get four votes to move something to the docket, then good, and then we move on to the next one. Now, this particular one, there's been a fair amount of discussion already, and I have a number of things to say, but I've been sort of holding back. So I was wondering, could we finish discussing this along with the others that were not moving to the docket later?
That's fine. I was just trying to get consensus in the same vein as if, do I have four votes to move this forward as an alternative code amendment outside of the docketing process? And if so, we'll add it to the, to an alternative recommendation.
Okay, well, then I need to discuss that with, with everyone then, because I have some. It, it, it hasn't, wait, I guess we, I guess we're doing this without discussion. Okay, never mind.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically the way I'm voting on it is I would put it on the docket if I could, but I can't. So I'm going to recommend that it be pushed forward as a separate code amendment and as a separate a recommendation to council that this be brought up as a separate code amendment. So are there four people that agree with that? I saw some thumbs. Okay.
Yeah.
Great. So I have four, so. Great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so proposed amendment six came from Kelly Redolphy, and this was the third one we, we heard from earlier in the evening. And this amendment would require electric sources for space heating and new construction of commercial and multifamily buildings. I listed out three sections of the development code here that relate to commercial and multifamily buildings. However, this concept would best be placed in the building code. It really is something that relates to the energy codes. And the staff do not believe it's appropriate to be in the development code. And so for that reason, I would recommend not docketing this. And that's nothing to speak to the merit of the idea. I think it's a very good idea. And I hope that the city could take it up through another process. Because it's a building code issue, it would not be the purview of the planning commission, but the city council could choose to do this kind of an amendment on their own.
Okay, does anybody want to move this to the docket despite the statement from staff? Ted?
Yeah, so I think similar to what we were talking about on amendment number five. Is this something where we could consider suggesting it to council, saying that, hey, there should be a separate motion for this, not part of the docket, but that this is something that we really need in order to get to fifty percent reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by twenty thirty. And essentially allow this to move forward, even if it's not on the docket, to get around the, the fact that the docket has this limitation on only the development code. Is that, is that what you want to vote on first? Or you want to vote on just whether to include it in the docket?
Well, we could certainly vote on that. My opinion there, however, is that because this is outside of the purview of the commission, I'm not sure it is. I, I'm not sure as a body, it makes sense for us to make a recommendation on something that is outside of the scope of the, of the body. That being said, if there's four people that feel like this should be sent as an alternate recommendation to the council, then, then we can go ahead and do that. But Tiffany?
I was just going to say, I think you could just modify the language a little bit to indicate it's more a nod of support from some number of the planning commissioner, the majority, rather than something that commission purview over, if that makes sense.
Uh, that's fine, Allison. If you're fine including this as a nod of support, how many people would be in favor of, I mean, again, this is just on the surface. Basically, you're saying it warrants further consideration, not whether you're for or against it. But are there, are there any people that are in favor of a nod of support that this should be considered by the council in the statement that we give to them? Great, I'm seeing five, Allison, so you can include that in the.
Okay. All right, so now we're coming up on a series of proposals from Daniel Thompson. I'll note that these were the exact same proposals that were submitted last year. So for those of you that were on the commission last year, these have not changed at all. They are literally the exact same pieces of paper that were submitted last year. So number seven here relates to residential development standards and the gross floor area provisions. And these are very detailed. It would reduce the ceiling height from twelve feet to ten feet before it's counted as a clear story space. So basically, what this means is if you've got an area of the house with like a vaulted ceiling, like a great room or an entryway that has a vaulted ceiling. If that, currently, if that's over twelve feet, the, the gross floor area is counted at a hundred and fifty percent. And he's proposing to reduce that to ten feet. So if your vaulted ceiling area was more than ten feet, it would count at one point five times instead of one times of the square feet.
I have a quick question from Victor.
They're never quick.
I, I'm trying to lean on it.
Nice job. So this is a question on this one, and I think all of the, or at least three of the four from Mr. Thompson. I believe these were in the count of the twelve or ten that we talked about when we did the bucket count. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, all of, there's five of these six ideas relate to the residential development standards. And so, you know, when we do that analysis and consider whether code amendment, code amendments should be undertaken, that'll be the council's decision. These ideas could be lumped into that process. I think, you know, we'll have to evaluate if they're docketed, we may need to take them one by one separately. If they're not docketed, they could still be included in that effort as, you know, these were public comments, these were ideas we received as part of the public engagement process, and we're going to evaluate them. And the council can make a decision on whether they'd like to request code amendments related to these issues, and then the planning commission could take that up and, and recommend something more specific.
Thank you. Carolyn?
How certain are we that we're going to do the residential development standards in two oh two two?
We are definitely planning to do an analysis of the effects of, you know, how well has the, the twenty seventeen code amendment worked? You know, what were the impacts of it? And do we achieve what we set out to do? That analysis is definitely happening next year. And then that'll be shared with you all and with the council. The council will need to make a determination at that point on what comes next and whether, whether and, and when they'd like to take up code amendments. They, they could choose to docket those for work in twenty twenty three, or they could choose to move that along more quickly. That's really at the council's pleasure.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the analysis will be done in two oh two two, but we might not get to code amendments until twenty twenty three then.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, it's a little bit sticky. Are there, okay, so there may be limitations. I'm, I'm sorry, Dan.
No, go ahead.
Just, are there going to be limitations on what can be proposed for amending in the development standards when we get there?
I think the, the council would set this scope of work. They would say, these are the things we would like to see amendments on. And then, you know, they, they would direct the commission to take those issues up and do further analysis and review and work with the staff to produce a, a recommended code amendment.
So we couldn't be certain that the ones that Mr. Thompson has brought up will be in the work program?
Right, I think, you know, that would be based on the outcomes of this analysis and then what the council chooses to do from there. So if they were docketed, they would definitely require further analysis next year. We're in the future. If they're not docketed, they can be tossed into this process and see what comes out at the end.
I see.
I get the sense that more discussion may be wanted here. But let me just start by asking, are there four people that believe that these should be moved directly to the docket for discussion and consideration next year? I've got two. Okay, so we'll come back and discuss this one. Are those votes going to be the same for all of these amendments, the, the Dan Thompson?
Seven through ten plus twelve.
Because we'll skip forward if it's going to, if the vote's going to be the same. Mike?
I might have a different vote on number eleven.
I think we should talk about number eleven separately because it's not part of the residential development standards.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so seven through ten and twelve, I think we're in agreement. We'll come back and discuss either individually or as a group. So why don't we then move to number eleven?
Okay. All right, so this one is also from Mr. Thompson, but it relates to the administrative code and a section of the code that is where we create the four types of land use reviews. So there's four categories, one through four. And they each have different requirements in terms of, you know, what the review process is. Are there public hearings? What type of public notice is required, et cetera? And this specifically would have changed the classifications of several types of permits and would require additional public notification or public notice for those actions. And this one actually was docketed by the city council last year. And so it's on our work plan for this year, and I'm planning to bring it back to the commission in December for an initial study session. So I'm not sure why Mr. Thompson submitted it again. I did ask him that when this came in and he did not respond.
Is there? So my understanding is that we can't put something on the docket that has been considered in the last three years. And by the fact that it was docketed last year, I believe it should be excluded on that basis, correct? I mean, despite the fact that we haven't gotten to it, like we're still in the year twenty twenty one, and we haven't gotten to it. But it has been agreed to. the year twenty twenty one, and we haven't gotten to it, but it has been agreed to be considered by the
I agree with that, and I would say that, you know, it's already on the docket, like once something's on the docket, it stays there until a decision is made. It doesn't expire after a year and come off and need to be put back on again. It's it's still there.
Okay. So with that, are there four people that believe that we need to push this forward again? No, and then let me just ask the contrary to that, do we need to come back and discuss this, or do we have four people that believe that this should not be docketed at all because it's already on the docket from last year? Okay, so we will just, we don't need to come back to discuss it. It will be.
So number twelve, we're coming back to. Number thirteen was proposed by Commissioners Weinberg and Boatsman. It's a comprehensive plan amendment for the transportation element. And this one, we heard some public testimony about in the beginning. It would add to new policies to the requiring the bike and pedestrian facilities plan to be updated related to the arrival of light rail service and then at least every eight years. So basically, we'd want to update it here shortly and then have a schedule of regularly updating it. I did want to note that the bike and pedestrian facilities plan was originally adopted in nineteen ninety six and then updated in twenty ten. So it, I looked at it, it does not reflect, it doesn't even speak to the fact that we're going to have light rail at all. And, you know, it doesn't reflect any of the changes that have happened in the city over the last, you know, more than a decade. It doesn't speak to, you know, kind of the evolution in the field of transportation and how people are designing bike lanes and bike infrastructure these days. Some of the focus on safety for pedestrians, it's it's not there. It also doesn't include anything like bike sharing or scooter sharing, which we've seen kind of as an emerging area related to bike and pedestrian planning. So I would agree that it's pretty outdated and could use an update.
For clarification, however, what we're voting on here is strictly the work, the docketed work would be strictly to add the policies to the comprehensive plan. It would not actually be the review of the plan.
That's right. And I think if one of the policies in the comprehensive plan was that the bike and ped plan should be updated, like prior to the arrival of light rail or something like that. That would create a requirement, the city needs to, our our actions and our policies need to be in alignment with the comp plan. So then then we would need to actually do that. Would actually need to go update the plan on the timeline that's set.
Right, but but if the
It's a two step process.
It's it's definitely a two step process, but what we would be voting on today is inclusion in the docket is strictly the updating of the policies in the comp plan that would direct that work.
That's right.
Great. I just, I wanted to make clarity on that, just as people are thinking about budgeting of time and effort for this. Are there four people that believe that this warrants discussion next year for discussion of adding those two new policies?
We have a couple of hands up, Dan.
Oh, sorry. Go go ahead, Carolyn. I was just trying to get to you to a yes vote. So I don't know. I see.
Ted, why don't you go first since you took the lead on this?
Well, I I guess I wanted to amplify the feedback we got from Mr. From Mr. Clausen and Mr. Stanton. That time is of the essence on this thing, and the the light rail is going to be here in twenty twenty three. And we have settlement money from sound transit that I presume can be used for this because it can be used for anything. It's impact light rail, but it has a sunset on it. So there's a time attachment to that. So I I I very much agree with their sentiment that we need this to not just be planned, but be something that gets done. And I I think that the fastest way to do that is to get four or more thumbs up here so we can get it on to the CPA into the the comprehensive planet amendment docket and get it discussed next year so we can actually get that in there.
Well, we're ahead of you because I saw five or six hands at least. So does anybody else? So I believe we have consensus on that.
No, I I actually wanted, I have my hand up, I.
Oh, sorry, Carolyn, I thought you were.
Hard to see. Okay, so no, I was just saying he he might go first, but I would like to point out that we actually received a request from two of our persons who testified in appearances to actually amend this. They would like it to say that what is in the plan is implemented within the duration of the plan. So I would, I would, I suppose I would suggest that we come back and discuss this and and consider changing the language before we take our vote.
So I I would just make the argument that I don't think that that's relevant because the language of the plan is what we would. The docket itself just says, are we going to have a discussion about new policies, not about what the specific language should be? And the process of actually reviewing the 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 policies would and what the language of those would be would be further in the year, unless I'm missing something.
Well, the reason I I feel it would fit well with what we have drafted, which is not showing on the screen right now, but what we had drafted was update the bike ped plan so that it is ready to relate to the arrival of light rail. Update the bike ped plan every eight years. If those were adopted in the comp plan, the bike ped plan is immediately out of date. So basically, that means it has to be updated very soon. So I think along with those two very firm policies that adding one that a policy or a goal that the bike plan be implemented within the a time period of its duration, I I think that's the type of thing that does belong in a comp plan. It's an overall guiding policy that has to do with do this plan, place a priority on it. Use the money, find, be creative, look for grants, you know, to actually implement the plan instead of having it be a functional plan that you can spend a little bit of money on it when you happen to have some spare cash. So that would be my recommendations to amend it.
Tiffany.
Yeah, I I just wanted to maybe provide a little more context for that. I I do. I I do agree with the sentiment that we need to be more proactive about implementing our bicycle and pedestrian plan. There's no doubt about that. But I also realize that I I don't think it's really realistic to say every project in the plan has to be up, has to be completed within eight years. Because that would basically mean what you're doing is you're backing your projects out to what you can conceivably get done in eight years, and you're not actually planning fully for the long term. So you might be like completing part of a bicycle network, part of a pedestrian network, because realistically, you're not going to complete every needed bike pedestrian project in the city within eight years. And then there's, you know, you could prioritize it within the plan. I mean, that I think is pretty common to say, like, you know, these are our priorities and given these sort of like funding expectations, we think we can do this within eight years. I think that's reasonable, but so just with that kind of thought in mind, I I don't think this is the place where I would insert a policy like that.
And I'll reiterate, all we're doing is creating a work item, not the details of what you're talking about, Carolyn. This is about should there be a work item for us to discuss new policies for a pedestrian plan? And if the council agrees that that's something that we should discuss, then we'll get into all of those details and and flesh those things out. Victor?
I I seem to have lost the plot on this. I I thought we were going through and just taking a quick vote of what goes directly to the council, and then what are we going to go back and discuss? And we seem to have kind of slipped into the second one. Are are we?
You were right on, and the first thing I did as I took a vote, we already have five people that have said that they wanted to move forward with this. And out of deference professionalism to my peers, I gave them a moment to speak their mind about the you know, we we gave time to other people that presented their things in the beginning and Ted and Carolyn weren't afforded that earlier, so I was sort of giving them a little bit of deference.
I appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, Carolyn, do you have one last just thing to? We've already got agreement that we're going to move this forward to the council, so.
Well, I want to clarify why I requested to speak about this beyond having enough votes to move it to the docket. We were requested to change what this says by two of our people in test in in appearances. That's why I'm more than happy to support a docket item that I helped to propose. But we were asked to to change it, and so that's why I'm saying, hold on, maybe we should come back and reconsider what it says. And that's that's what I'm advocating for.
Understood, and my interpretation is that there's going to be more than enough time to make those changes, and I don't think it's, Allison, unless I'm missing something from your side that you believe that there's something substantive here, but my understanding is this is just a titled placeholder to discuss this issue, and the very thing that you're bringing up, Carolyn, is what we will talk about when we review this next year.
No, I actually felt that this is not a sort of a work item. I felt this was a, what should the we have recommended a couple of policies to be put in the comp plan. And I'm recommending that that policy say something else than what we proposed. So I, yeah, I I think it's, I think it I don't see it the same way that you do, Dan.
If I can jump in, I.
Sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off for a second, Ted. Allison, based on what you've heard, is there anything more that we need to do versus beyond already agreeing that this is something that we need to have more discussion on, and we'll have plenty of time to get into to this?
Yeah, I agree that if the the topic is placed on the docket and, you know, the council dockets it, we could get into these other details about what the specific amendment looks like and whether it includes, you know, a timeline or a project list that needs to be completed. That that could be part of the discussion over what the specific amendment looks like that would take place next year. I don't think we need to get those details in right now. Like, I think you said this is like a placeholder, and that's correct.
Okay. So Carolyn, I I think we're mostly on board with this. I just want to like do it at the right place and time. So this has already been voted on and approved to move forward on the recommendation to the council for us to look at next year. So Allison, do we want to look at the next, the next, or the last three?
Yeah, so the last three were all recommended by staff, and this is a bit of a formality. These items, the council reviewed briefly this fall and September and adopted interim regulations with a twelve month work plan. And so what that means is the council is essentially committed to come back and do a permanent code amendment sometime in twenty twenty two. It needs to be adopted before the interim regulations expire next September. And so the staff wanted to bring these forward on the docket kind of for transparency sake, and and so that it's clear that this is part of the work plan that, you know, we've already committed to. And I know that each of these items, maybe we're a little controversial with the public, but they are things that state legislation requires the city to do. So you know, whether we want to talk to our state legislators about that or other things, I'm sure the council can pursue that as they wish. But from the staff perspective, you know, we're going to be moving forward with analyzing and developing recommendations for for permanent code language because that is what's required. So the first one relates to a limitation on unrelated persons that cohabitate. We previously had a limit of six unrelated persons per dwelling unit, and so this interim regulation removed that. The second one relates to adult family homes. Previously, both state regulations and our city code limited adult family homes to six people. The state legislation increased that to eight. So again, the interim regulation also increased our code limit to eight people being served in an adult family home. And the final one is related to transitional and permanent supportive housing. And essentially, this legislation requires the city to allow these types of housing anywhere where residential uses or hotels are allowed. There's some specific language in there about, you know, making sure we're allowing enough housing based on the projected needs for our community and things like that, that we're going to have to do some more analysis on. This piece of legislation and this code amendment was kind of the driving factor for doing interim regulations because there's a lot there. It, the state legislation required us to adopt code by September thirtieth. We only had a couple of months to look at it. And there's a lot more there that we'd like to dig into and analyze. And so this one in particular, I think we really needed the extra time and we want to look at it some more. That said, I don't think it really changes. We already allow certain kinds of shelters and transitional housing in these zones in the city, so I don't think that this code amendment will have a significant impact on Mercer Island, but we do want to take more time to understand the details of how this will work. So that's the three state mandated and staff recommended amendments.
Great, and maybe we can just look at these as a group. Are are there four people in favor of moving these forward on the docket? Great, so we have consensus to move those forward. So as a summary, I have six items that we have agreed should be moved forward. Three were the 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 state mandated ones, and then there were three others. I have two items that we have forwarded as recommendations to the council to consider separately from the docketing process. And I have one, two, I have the one and two, and then the five from Mr. Thompson related to the residential development standards. So I, it looks to me like we'll probably have at a minimum, three conversations, depending on whether we look at Mr. Thompson's all at one group or whether we look at them individually. Does that map to what you have, you have, Allison?
Yes, with the addition that we decided not to docket number eleven, which was the one from Mr. Thompson that's already been docketed.
So that's correct. Yeah, that's one that we're neither going to discuss nor move forward. Okay, so the question is, it is just shy of eight o'clock. Does everybody want a quick ten minute break, and then we'll come back and discuss? I'm seeing a couple of head nods. Okay, great. So it is right now seven, I have seven forty nine, so let's come back in eleven minutes at the top of the hour. Thanks, everyone. I guess we should turn my microphone back on and then you could hear me.
Yes.
All right, it looks like everybody is back, Allison. So I have numbers one and two, and then the five residential amendments from Mr. Thompson to discuss. So I don't know if you have anything more, maybe if you can pull up.
Yeah, go back to the slides on those.
Yeah.
There we go. All right. So the first one is the tree code issue. And I think maybe we initially had support for this one, but folks wanted to talk about it more also.
Great. So Carolyn, I know you submitted this. I don't know if you have any other comments, or I forget who exactly said that we wanted to come back, but I know you had questions, I believe, Carolyn, around whether or not this was going to be brought up as a part of the the review this year of the residential standards.
Yeah, that was sort of my overarching question. I'd like to talk about maybe the merits of the idea first, if that would be all right. That is that welcome by the commission? Is that, is that what we need to do here right now? Okay, I'm seeing some nods. Okay, so I proposed this because I have noticed that the first thing that grabbed my attention is that when there's one large tree on a piece of property being developed, no tree has to be retained. And the reason this works out, while saving 30% of our trees sounds, sounds kind of good. When you take the rounding rule and do the math, it doesn't end up being that good. So for for one tree, point three of one tree is point three tree. And there is a section of the code that says when you are less than point five, you round down. And when you are point five or more, you round up. So one tree equals zero trees saved. Two, three, and four trees on the property equals one tree. Again, because of the rounding requirement. For example, you have four trees on the property. Point three times four comes to what? Point, point nine or something like that? Okay, 1.2? Yeah, so you end up with one tree. Five, six, and seven trees, you get two trees. Nine, 10, and 11 trees, you get three trees. So I was just kind of amazed when I saw what the impact of the rounding rule is on our intention to save what we thought was 30% of the trees there. So this is, this is where it's coming from. I think that since we worked on the tree code a few years ago, the climate issue has becoming, you know, coming way to the top of the reason to save more of our large trees. And this, of course, only relates to large trees. The heat island effect, we're starting to see that as being a crisis this last summer is certainly the example. And the heating and cooling costs that go along with the benefit that trees provide, air quality, ecosystem services, mental health. So that's the reason I proposed it. I am thinking that, you know, from what Allison has said, we can't be sure that certain things will be involved in the RDS development standards review in 2022. So I guess I would vote to docket this item, given and and hope, hope that it can be docketed, given that we really don't know how much we'll be looking at. I'm hoping we can add to the, you know, if we did docket it, that we could add a statement that if this can be folded into the review we would be doing anyway in 2022, then it doesn't need to be docketed. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you, Carolyn. Jordan, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Carol, maybe you can help me understand this. If somebody has a vacant lot, not that we have many of those left on the island, but if they have, if they have a vacant lot, and there's a big beautiful tree smack dab in the middle of the lot, you know, right where obviously the house would have to go, how was, how would that sort of situation be handled?
Are you asking how it would be handled under the existing code or under my proposal? Okay, under the existing code, that tree can be taken down because you don't have to save a tree when you have one tree.
Okay.
Okay, under my proposal, you have to save a tree. But the another problem with the tree code, and I was a little sorry to hear that the whole code isn't going to be gone through because there's loads of problems in the existing tree code, in my opinion. But one of the problems with the existing code, it's not really clear what to do in the situation that you're asking. If you read it literally, it says that person cannot develop their property, but that's not the way it's being interpreted. So just, I'll just leave it at that. The interesting thing, however, is that you, if you have something called an exceptional tree, then the code is very specific on that. It says that if you would be limited, if you could not build at least 85% of the gross floor area of the house that your lot size allows you to build, you can remove that tree. But it doesn't say that for any old tree. It only says it for the exceptional tree. So there's an eye and a matter that I think in the tree code that should be fixed. But anyway, good question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking of an example in my old neighborhood in the middle of the island where there was a completely undeveloped, very beautiful wooded lot. And if it were, you know, if I were Kingford Day, it would have been snatched up and turned into a, you know, green space. But, you know, it wasn't. And, you know, a ton of beautiful trees were taken down so that they could build a huge house on it. And I'm very conflicted because I'm an unabashed tree hugger and share your, your concerns. But I wouldn't, you know, I also believe in property rights and so I, I, I think if we're not, you know, if we, if we go back to the earlier discussion about the limit of what we can put on the docket, what we can realistically get through next year. If that was not an issue, I would absolutely sign up for this because it's merit, you know, it merits discussion. I just don't know when I look at it, when I compare it to all the other things, I don't know where I, you know, where I stand. And yeah.
Well, you know, when we get all done and see what what's left on our, you know, Well, you know, when we get all done and see what what's left on our, you know, list of potential ones, and we're all finished, you know, maybe we can come to a decision on that, but I'm glad you think it's has merit to consider. It would not change the rules about when you can remove trees for development. It only has to do with how many to save. And trying to overcome the rounding rule, which ends up not saving very many trees.
Right. Maybe I'll just do a quick round robin of everyone just to see if anyone else has thoughts or comments on this and whether or not they want to see it move forward or what their concerns are. So I'll just go by what's on my screen. Tiffin, you're up in the first corner.
Oh, sure. I have a couple of thoughts on it. One, I'd rather do this as part of the residential update instead of docketing it. The other thing I'd like to say is maybe we'd just like to think of the trees from the perspective as like our total tree canopy and what we're losing. Because I think maybe that's more pertinent than like one tree on an individual lot. So I guess that's, so I guess what I'm kind of wondering is are we really trying to fix the right thing? And then I'm also conscious of the fact that some people have very few trees and some people just have so many and and they're really huge because they just haven't, you know, taken them down in the past. So I've always thought there was a bit of inequity in our tree code in that way. And then I guess the last thing I'd say is I'm not super up to date on exactly what our tree requirements are and development requirements are, but I, you know, I generally like, I kind of like Jordan, like I, I obviously want to maintain our tree canopy, but I kind of want to do it in a thoughtful, logical way. So I think, you know, I would, I would not particularly want to afford this to the docket, but I would want to at least touch on this issue when we look at the residential code.
You're on mute, Dan.
Of course I am. Sorry, I was gonna go to you, Mike.
I tend to agree with with Tiffin on this point. I do think we we need to look at this. I think the rounding issue is a problem. It's not clear to me if this is a serious issue that is related to only individual trees. Call them legacy trees or unique trees on isolate lots, or you know how we deal with the with Jordan's example? That if you had a fifty percent rule, the lot would be effectively undevelopable. So I think it requires quite a bit of thought, and I'm not sure that we really have the bandwidth at this point to deal with it, but I tend to agree with Carolyn that this is something that's important. And it's better to deal with sooner than later. Having said that, if we're going to consider it next year, I think we should do it then.
Ted.
Yes, I think the the key question here is, do we put it on the docket and require essentially that it be discussed next year? Or do we say this is going to be discussed as part of the comprehensive plan review as a whole, in which case it will likely be reviewed next year, but it might not actually become in an adopted change until the year afterwards. And I would prefer to see this on the docket so that we have one more year of saving trees rather than have it wait until 2023 when more development might happen and we might lose more trees.
Good point.
Victor.
I'll echo Tiffin's comments, Tiffin and Mike's comments on this. I'm not gonna rehash them, but yeah, I agree with those comments.
Okay. So I mean, hearing that, I guess the the vote is how many? Oh, sorry, Carolyn. Oh, yeah, that's right. I was gonna come back to you. Go ahead. Yes.
Okay, I don't know if you were going to say your view, Dan. I didn't want to interrupt, but oh, sorry.
No, I can, I can hear you.
Okay, so did you, were you gonna say your views, Dan, before I doubled back on a couple of things people raised?
I mean, I certainly can. I don't really have anything more than than what's been done. I mean, like others, I you know, being in possession of what a couple of arborists have told me are the largest oak trees on the island on my property, I'm a big proponent of of trees and certainly do all of this. The planner and me, however, hates piecemeal regulation, and I would really love to see this looked at more broadly. Carolyn, you and I have talked before about the inadequacy of our tree code in its entirety. And so there's a part of me that says, yes, this warrants further discussion. However, the other side of me says that I really want to be a proponent of doing this in a thoughtful way as a, as a broader effort. Because I really dislike piecemeal, you know, just piecemealing these, these sorts of things together. So I'm inclined to say I'm in support of it, especially as we look at the residential code and those updates, as well as the comp plan update that's going to be coming shortly. So I'm not sure I'm in favor of docketing it, but I am in favor of of really digging into this more thoughtfully, but I'm, I'm one of seven of you, so.
I would like to add, if I may, that this, this does not affect whether a tree cannot or can can or cannot be removed for development. Those rules are totally in place. And, you know, there are answers. It sounds like a very confusing topic, but you know, if you're into the tree code, there are answers to all the questions that you you are raising. Tiffin mentioned that, you know, maybe this is more, we should be looking at our trees more of a, as a tree canopy. How many, how many trees have we got throughout the whole island? And is that enough? The problem with that is, you know, that's, that's a very important aspect of our tree program Mercer Island. But what's also incredibly valuable is trees in your neighborhood for shading, for cutting wind, for heat island effect, for mental health. All of those reasons don't work very well for you if the trees are in the open space. So that's kind of why we, one of the reasons we have the tree code is, and it looks beyond the, you know, the open space tree protection program. And the fifty percent requirement is not, I think, Jordan, you were concerned that would make a situation where somebody couldn't develop their property. That's actually not the case. That's not the case. So these are all complicated questions, but you know, with a little bit of time, they can all be addressed and I I, I understand what you're saying down about piecemeal work, but sometimes an item can be changed in a code without messing everything else up. And I think this is one of them.
Carolyn, could you clarify what you, what you mean by changing it from thirty percent to fifty percent would not preclude somebody from developing? Didn't quite follow.
Well, because you have to save either thirty or in my proposal fifty percent of the large trees that are present. But if you, if they are in the way of you making your gross floor area that you're allowed to have to build your house, you get to take them down.
Okay.
Okay, now, the other, another interesting criteria in our tree code. When we added the thirty percent requirement in 2017, we also left the original requirement in, which said that you had to save as many large trees as you could. So that's kind of interesting. So in some cases, if there's a lot of trees there already, the arborist is going to require that those large trees be saved. And then there's a separate requirement if the tree is what is called exceptional. So but I hope I answered your question that it doesn't, you know, it doesn't prevent a house from being built.
So, um, thank you, Carolyn. I'm gonna go to you, Tiffin, but I'll just make the comment first, just as a reminder that this is the, the vote in favor of this is merely, does this warrant further conversation, not necessarily whether you're for or against the specifics of what Carolyn has proposed. So go ahead, Tiffin. You can have your guests' help as well.
You know, she's got her own ideas. We might need an eighth commissioner. I guess.
She, she would be a ninth because the cat is the eighth.
I guess my question would go to the leeway within the proposal if we do get to the point of discussing it further. So for example, if thirty to fifty percent ends up not making sense for whatever reason, is there a leeway to have sort of a different requirement? For example, there, you know, you must retain a minimum of three trees. That's just an example, or does this kind of tie us into almost a specific way of measuring it?
I think if this were docketed and came back to the commission, you would have three options. You could move the recommended language forward as is, you could not move it forward, you know, vote to not recommend an amendment, or you could make a recommendation that revises the amendment or modifies it and recommend a modified version.
Okay. All right, I guess then I'm just kind of thinking it's maybe more a matter of workload than anything.
Ted, I see your hand.
Yeah, I was gonna make the same comment that this is something that can be amended later on, just like the thing we were talking about a moment ago on the bike and ped plan that we will have an opportunity to amend it later on. This is just a discussion of should we put it on the docket for further discussion and possible amendments?
Yep. Carolyn, I'll let you have one last comment.
Yep. So I guess I would recommend in terms of, do we have the bandwidth or could the workload accommodate it? I would recommend we consider that after we see what's on the list at the end of our discussion. Because, you know, it might not be that many things. So that's my suggestion.
Yeah, and you know, we can send what we want to the council and they can modify or add things as well. All right. So with that, do I have four people that believe this warrants being added to the docket for our work plan for discussion next year? I see three. I've got Mike with four. That's all we need. So we'll go ahead and add that to the docket, Allison.
Okay. I'm advance here to number two. So this was the comprehensive plan amendment that would require the adoption of impact fees for bike and pedestrian facilities.
Carolyn, do you want to briefly speak to this again?
Sure, you know, it's been told by, told, we've been told by BO that we don't have the authority to ask for a fee like this. So I think that we can't really recommend this.
Okay, Ted.
Yeah, so the same comment that I made a moment ago, that moving this to the docket gives us the ability to discuss it and amend it later. So the amendment that we have later might be not to add a new fee, but to essentially add code to the existing fees for transportation infrastructure to emphasize the need to factor in bicycle and pedestrian when having a, the transportation impact fee, just so that we can ensure that, you know, as the modes of transportation that we use evolve over time that the roads, the things we choose to call roads, so which might be wider sidewalks or separated paths for bicycles or scooters or something like that keeps up with what the, what people are using to move from one place to another.
Okay, Victor. I didn't understand Carolyn's comment. Carolyn, can you? Can you explain that?
Yeah, um, cities are authorized by the Growth Management Act to assess impact fees in four specific areas. Bicycle and pedestrian facilities are not one of those areas. So I've been talking with Bo Park about that this week, and he made that very clear. We also don't even have the authority to decide we want to have impact fees for bicycle and pedestrian facilities. We are very limited by state law in what we can assess for development. But the good thing is, and Allison made this clear in her comments in our staff, in our packet, City of Mercer Island is using some of their transportation impact fees on implementing some of the bicycle and pedestrian plan, but there's a limit on that. It has to be in the right of way. So that's the only part that we can use at present for bike pit. Did I answer your question? I hope.
It did. So we can't assess fees. The GMA says we can't assess fees, right?
Can or do you say?
Cannot.
It says we can, but it tells us, it tells us the four areas in which we can do that.
Okay.
This is not one of the areas.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it generally prohibits us from putting fees on development except for some really narrowly defined things, like we can do permit fees and we can do these four types of impact fees that Carolyn described.
So, so if I'm understanding correctly, this is a way to get around the prohibition of so we can, we can assess fees, but we can't do it for pedestrians and bicycles. And so this is a way of getting around that?
No, I think I mean, I was in error, sort of, you could say I was in error in proposing it. So
well, that
you know, either that or there's another recommendation we could make. I think Ted was alluding to okay, another way of addressing, you know, funding, because this has been the huge problem with bicycle and pedestrian facilities. You have a plan, but you have no money.
Okay, so your, your, your comment just clarified because that's what I thought you said earlier.
Yeah.
But then I go, okay, so.
Okay.
Got it.
Good.
Mike and then Ted and then Tiffin.
Just a quick comment. I think Carolyn is correct. This is not available for a separate impact fee. And I think the answer to this is lies in the other amendment to include this in the comp plan. And then it can become a part of the capital improvement plan, be a normal budgeting process. And that's the way to address the issue out of the right of way for things within the right of way. Allison is correct, I believe, that that money can be spent on these type of improvements. So you gotta break the pieces up and get at it via changing the comp plan and and budgeting the improvements that that come out of that.
Dan, may I reply to what he just said about the CIP? Would you rather I wait?
Yeah, if you could wait, let me go there and tip impatient. Thank you.
I saw the comments from BO about it being limited to, or somebody from the staff, I'm not sure if it's BO, saying it was limited to streets and roads. I looked up the definition. What is a street? Looked up the definition. What is a road? So a road is a way leading from place to, from a place to another with a specially prepared surface which vehicles can use. So I looked up the definition. What is a vehicle? This is just dictionary. This is not what's in our comp plan. We might want, need to add these definitions. But what is a vehicle? A thing used transporting people or goods. So let's talk about electric scooter. It's a vehicle. It runs on a paved path, right? You don't want to run it through grass or through mud. It runs on a paved path, right? You don't want to run it through grass or through mud. So that makes that a road, according to those definitions. So we might want to clarify in our code, what is a road and what is a vehicle? So that we can essentially say it, that we can use transportation impact fees for helping out with a bicycle path that even if it's not within the right of way. But we might have to look at, are there other places in the code I'm not aware of where it explicitly says, uh-uh, it is not in the right of way, you can't do it. Is there adjustments we need to make there? I think in order to have that detailed conversation, we need this on the docket, right? If we don't put it on the docket, we can't really have that conversation. So I, that's why I'm in favor of having this one on the docket.
So, Tiffin?
Um, okay, let me, let me try to parcel this out, this is kind of getting complicated. I, I guess what I'd say is I'm not particularly in favor of moving it to the docket, but I had maybe some clarifying thoughts or questions. First of all, I think, I think generally you can assess transportation fees for anything in the right of way, and you can assess parks fees for things in parks. So I think in some ways, perhaps with some limitations, you can cover the non-motorized projects through your normal impact fee systems that we have. If I'm incorrect, let me know. I, I don't think they have to also, so this is what I, I'm not updated on the law and is, do they also have to have some motorized capacity aspect to them or not? That's what I'm kind of wondering.
No, 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 I don't think so.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm currently working on the rate studies for our current transportation impact fee with a consultant, and we're including projects that are like widening the shoulders on East and West Mercer Way for pedestrian and bikes and sidewalk improvements and other things like that, but are a standalone project meant to benefit pedestrian and bicycle safety. So I believe that those projects can stand on their own as long as they're in the right of way.
And those are feeding into your impact fee system, they're the kind of capital projects.
Yeah, we have to have a basis for the amount, the fee, the amount of the fee that we charge. And so we look at, you know, what projects have been included in the CIP or the comprehensive plan? And what's the estimated cost of those projects? Then you add that all up and you figure out how much development we're projecting in the future and then divide that out and you get a number that's, you know, this much per dwelling unit.
So, okay, so that's consistent with what I, my recollection was. And so in that case, it just seems to me you would kind of be covered for anything within the right of way and within parks. And I can't think of another place you would have that, that kind of thing. And then maybe I would also just, you know, mention that a couple of years ago, we did put in a policy to establish levels of service, which I'm sure you all remember, like levels of service for not, I don't remember the exact language, but it was kind of a combination, non-motorized, pedestrian, bicycle. And I, I think part of the impetus for, with, with that was basically like, we don't know what we're measuring and we want to, you know, wanted to get away from only measuring level of service with vehicular capacity. And so like just providing, you know, an alternative way to measure it. But I'm not a hundred percent sure what the law is in terms of feeding, feeding that level of service into the impact fee system. And I don't think we have to work that out tonight. It was more kind of food for thought as we're kind of thinking about how to kind of address this concern in the future. I think, does that make sense?
Think so.
Anyone, anyone, yeah, so I guess.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna summarize it with my comments, Tiffin, which is, you know, we just agreed to push forward amendment number thirteen, which is basically a more holistic view of the pedestrian and bicycle facilities within the transportation element, which is going to be a more thorough review of this entire thing. Given the specificity of this amendment as proposed around an impact fee, I get the fact that there's things that can be, that we could alter this. But just given the specificity of this, I really don't think it's the right approach, and we already have something that we're moving forward to me that encapsulates this entire discussion. So if we want to talk about how to best find ways of directing capital to be put towards these things, I think the review of the bicycle and facilities plan as we've already discussed is the right way to do that. And I think that's a more overarching way of saying what you just said, Tiffin. But I, I could be viewing that through my own.
Yeah, I, I think that would, I guess I'd say it's a complimentary assessment. I was more just trying to get a sense of the, I don't know, more the technical aspect of it, because I, I just couldn't remember and I wasn't updated on how the laws changed over the last couple of years.
Yeah. Victor, I'll go to you and then to Ted.
I'll, I'll say plus one to what you said, Dan. You know, we've had two votes on, on other items that where we chose not to put them in the docket, but we made a recommendation to the city council on this one, would it just be possible to go and tuck this into the other bicycle and facilities and ask that this be considered as a part of that?
Okay, Ted?
Yeah, I, I think there's a, a clear distinction between thirteen and two in terms of the proposed amendments. Thirteen is about planning the projects that we, the island needs, and two is about paying for it. And I think a lot of the projects that we've been asking for and planning for, for a long time haven't happened because they aren't for. So I, I think it's important to have both thirteen and two on the docket so that there's some way, even if we don't create a new fee for it, but if we put something in our exist, some language in our existing transportation fees saying, and it's got to address bicycle and pedestrian, then there's a much greater chance that we'll actually see the asphalt and see the paint in time for the light rail so that the, these projects can actually happen.
Okay, Mike?
One comment following up on Allison, what she was getting at really are the constitutional underpinnings of impact fees, and they have to pass what's called the Nolan Dolan test, which has now been amended by the Coons case. All Supreme Court, US Supreme Court cases, and impact fees have to be direct result of the development and proportional to the impacts. And I, I think we're getting the cart before the horse here of proposing impact fees or saying we should be adopting impact fees before we actually have policies that undergird that and then establish a basis for programs that, that are developed and we have a dollar amount that we can peg an impact fee too. Because otherwise, if we don't do that, they will, they will not be sustainable from a legal standpoint.
Okay, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call you out, Jordan, because I haven't heard you opine on this.
I'm struggling with this one, that's why you haven't heard anything from me. No, I, I I mean, I, I, I love the idea, if, if it makes sense to, to fold it in, I, I keep, I keep going back to the concern about filling up the docket. I think this is, I think this definitely has merit. But I, I kind of plead ignorance because I'm so, I'm so new to this process, so I'm, I'm learning through listening, but sorry, not much more to add.
Okay. Carolyn, I'll let you have the last word and then we'll, and then we'll take a tally.
Really appreciate all the great discussion about this one. I would double back to Mike, you mentioned if there was the, the best way to see money go into building bicycle and pedestrian facilities is policy and then getting it into the CIP. And I just want to mention that the implementation of that plan, it, it is regularly reflected in the CIP every year. They're, they're always doing something on it. So anyway, that, that sort of flow already works, it's just that there's, you know, very little money allocated to it. And then I guess in terms of getting the policy in the comp plan, I mean, this would basically get it in the comp plan in terms of, 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 you know, dedicating a percentage of our transportation funding to bicycles and pedestrians. Because if we consider, I mean, bicycles and pedestrians and scooters are transportation, they're just not vehicles. So, anyway, that's all I have to add.
They're vehicles, or it's unmotorized, but.
Non-motorized vehicles.
A wheelchair is a vehicle for that.
Yeah, and people who walk, yeah, that's locomotion, it's multimodal transportation with your legs.
Oh, sorry, I see Tiffin, do you have one last thing?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, you know, this is like very important to me, so I, I don't want to discount it, but I kind of feel like we have the infrastructure in place to actually have the impact fees and like Mike was saying, it's really a matter of the policy the city implements and how they prioritize their money. So I would say instead of spending the time on this this year, I think it should be scoped into our comp plan amendment to see if it's appropriate at that point to have a policy more strongly indicating a desire to fund bicycle and pedestrian improvements. And then I'd say it's honestly, it's up to the, it's up to the people in Mercer Island to kind of advocate for this and for the council to prioritize money this way. I, I think, I think we don't have a technical problem right now. I think we have more of a policy issue.
Okay. Mike, I see you have one more comment.
Yeah, um, you know, I'm, I'm very strongly in favor of this in concept. I'm just like Tiffany is saying, we have to go about the right way and we have to have the projects and then, you know, modify our impact fees, whether they're the park fee or the transportation impact fee to accommodate these, these projects, and that's, I think, the way to do it. I think we're all in favor of it. In concept, it's just a matter of how to do it the, the right way.
Okay. All right, so with all of that, do I have four people in favor of putting this on the docket? Who's in favor of putting this on the docket? I have two. Last call. Okay, hearing, hearing no others, we will not put it on the docket, but I'll just voice my opinion in that I do think it's something that we should discuss as a part of our broader, if we do get to discuss the broader transportation bicycle and pedestrian plan, then we take up this at that. Okay, so that's number two. Allison, we have five, let me just get a sense of everyone, the five items from Mr. Thompson. Do we want to look at those? Is, is everyone looking okay at looking at those as a group? Or does anybody wish that we look at any one of those individually? And if I hear nothing, we're gonna look at them as a group. Okay, the silence is deafening, so Allison, let's look at those as a group. The five, it's number seven, eight, nine, ten, and twelve. Carolyn?
I, I'm sorry, I, I got distracted for a moment. So you were asking, are we comfortable looking for them as a group versus individually? And we've decided to look at them only as a group?
I, I've heard no one tell me that they want to pull any of them out and look at them separately. Is there a specific one you would like to pull out from the group or?
Well, uh, no, because I suppose my whole issue is not the merits of them. Rather, it's more rather to, whether to have them be docketed or not, you know, considering we'll be looking at the residential development standard, so. Okay, thank you. Thanks for that moment of clarification for me.
Okay.
All right.
So, um, hearing that, Allison, what, I guess who wants to start here in the discussion? Carolyn, I'll go back to you.
Yeah, sure, um, I would recommend docketing all of them. First of all, I think they're all good ideas. I'm in favor of, of all of them, but aside from that, Dan has asked for these for two years, and we don't have any guarantee that these issues will be considered in our development regula, regulation review in twenty twenty-two. I would just say that, you know, in, in terms of my being in favor of the essence of these amendments, I think they're all worthy topics, you know, they're all, you know, they're all median and real, real issues that should be debated, I think.
Okay, Victor?
Like, uh, what Carolyn just said, I think similar to amendment number one, which also I believe could have gone into the residential code, we chose to docket that one, I think the same logic applies here. Even though there's an intention to cover these when we review the residential code, I'd, I'd like to see them docketed.
Okay. I'll just start going one by one, Tiffin.
I am not in favor of docketing them, and I would say because I would rather start from the standpoint of analyzing what has taken in place over the last couple of years in terms of development and seeing if it generally met our goals. I, I'm not going to call it any amendment specifically, but I will just say they're all very, very specific, and I kind of feel like I'm not convinced yet that we have a problem, and I'd, I'd like to kind of be shown that we have a problem before we start taking up these specific amendments. And, and that said, there could be many more problems or different problems that we're not aware of because we haven't seen the analysis yet. So I, just from kind of a process standpoint, I would like to start from the place of doing a broader analysis to see how our code is actually working, and then once we've identified the problems tackling them from that standpoint.
Thank you, Mike.
I agree with Tiffin, and I would just put it slightly differently. You know, Dan has had two years to document what he considers to be examples or problems based on these issues. And I'm not aware of any, and there's nothing in the material he's really submitted to identify them. And so in the absence of, of, of that, I would think that we would need to wait until we've done an analysis to see if any of these really represent problems with the code and problems that, you know, people are concerned about other than Dan. And you know, the only one that might be different than that is amendment twelve. But again, that does not seem like a particularly urgent issue that needs to be addressed separately from the, from everything else in the residential code.
Uh, go to Victor.
Yeah, I, I, I had a follow-up question for Tiffin, but Mike may have answered it. I was just wondering what that analysis that, that you're looking for would look like? Is it, is it what Mike just kind of described, which is just people who have problems with this and people who are complaining about this?
I guess I, well, I, I would defer to Allison because she's the one that is kind of, has thought about it more than I have. But it would be two things, it would be looking generally at public comment, which, you know, would include these proposals. It would include people who have, you know, maybe tried to build but have run into issues with building. And then we look at, you know, similar to how we had that amendment earlier tonight, like, hey, this, this doesn't really meet kind of the intention of the code. We're, we're causing problems for people for no sort of apparent reason, so there'd be kind of that look at it. Then there'd just be a look at, you know, the overall goals of the residential update was, you know, primarily really, well, I'm not going to say what they are because I can't remember, but primarily related to massing, just having these kind of giant mega houses, trying to maintain a little bit more of the neighborhood character. So I guess what I would say is I have kind of very casually walked around to see what our code has done, but I, I don't really have any data in front of me, so I would expect that's what staff would be pulling in addition to just general comments of how the code is working well for people, you know, coming up from different perspectives.
So what is the feedback mechanism for that? So if someone has a problem with the code, how do they make that known? And I, I don't know, that's a question for Tiffin or Allison?
Yeah. Yeah. If I can speak to that, um, I think sometimes those comments do come up.
I think sometimes those comments do come up through the planning staff, like, for example, the one that was on the docket here tonight about the critical areas code. Um, you know, our planning staff can become aware of issues if you know, multiple projects are coming across the same problem, and we're seeing this area of the code that you know, maybe it just doesn't make sense to the staff even, and you know, or there's a lot of people complaining about it and saying this is too tough, it's making it impossible to do what we want. You know, we start to become aware of issues that are coming up more than one time. Um, so that's one way. And I think with what Tiffin was just speaking to in terms of the process for this analysis, our plan is for for that to take three components. One will be more of a a number crunching data analysis to look at, you know, what is the gross floor area of the houses in the old code and the new code, and how much difference has it made? Um, you know, the massing and the building height, like, are there measurable differences happening in in the in the projects that have been developed since the code was adopted? And likewise with trees, you know, have more trees been protected? Um, have more exceptional trees, the very large trees been protected? I think there could be a series of questions like that that we can look to see, you know, is there quantitative or qualitative data that can shine some light on whether the code is achieving the objectives that were set out at the start?
And and we're on the, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was gonna say also, there's an outreach component, and we're hoping to talk with architects, builders, um, the design community to see what their feedback is about the code and how it's working with the projects they're building. And secondly, with residents and and, you know, people out in the neighborhoods and you know, what is their experience of the houses that have been built since 2017 under the new code? Is there a measurable difference? Do they feel like, you know, the intent of those code changes back then have been achieved with what they're seeing in the neighborhood?
Going back to the first point that you made, not with the outreach, but at the very beginning of your answer. Where is that captured?
Um, I think, you know, it's gonna be tough in some aspects. There won't be quantitative data, but I think in some measures we can look at, you know, we do some case studies on projects that have been completed under the new code and look at you know, here's what was built, here's how many square feet, you know, of gross floor area there, et cetera. We could compare that to what could have been possible under the old code and you know, make a reasonable guess as to what the difference would be. Um, we could also look for similar projects, like same size lot, you know, similar kind of situation and environment, one built under the old code, one built under the new code. What's the difference in the houses?
Good, I maybe I didn't state my question quite clearly. That that covers numbers two and three in terms of what you talked about, but the first one was really people who had problems with the code. Where is that captured? Where 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 is that captured?
I mean, I think that's more of a qualitative thing that staff will need to document. You know, here are the things that we've heard over the last three or four years. Um, we keep kind of a running list of here's potential code amendments that we think might be needed. Um, you know, just things that have come up during plan review and pre-application meetings. And, you know, parts of the code that we've noticed are issues.
So it is being captured somewhere or it's, I mean?
The planning staff has a running list of, um, you know, issues or concerns that might be potential code amendments for the future.
Got it. Yeah, thank you. Carolyn?
Um. Listening to the discussion, it has become very clear to me that we're doing Dan a disservice to not consider his amendments one by one. We're speaking about them as if they are a sort of a general, you know, kind of, you know, the some ideas to change the code, where each one of these i- is is really a separate topic. And um, I think we should talk about them. Um, you know, Dan is not it's he's under no obligation to submit docket items, proposals for changing the code that have to do with people having trouble building what they want. His, in fact, his suggestions have more to do with the code not meeting the vision that the uh, that was the intent of the previous code amendment. Almost every one of his recommendations has to do with ways in which the code sort of deviates from the idea of making smaller houses. You know, for example, so I I I really think we need to go through these one by one.
Ted?
Yes, I think one of the things that um, would be useful for the analysis when we're looking at uh, the effectiveness of the uh, existing code is to look at how many projects there were in like the five years leading up to the code change um, that would not have been allowed um, uh, post-code change. Um, I think we should do a similar analysis of looking at if we were to actually adopt all of uh, these suggested amendments uh, for Mr. Thompson. How many projects in the last five years would not have been doable? Um, with these, like, how many of them had a 12-story uh, clear story or 12, 12-foot clear uh, clear story spaces uh, that would have uh, put them over the GFA uh, limit? And that will give us kind of a a a measure, a quantitative measure of the impacts uh, of these. I like it. I think he uh, pointed out to us with the the two-car uh, parking space one that very few developers uh, actually build a house that doesn't have a three-car garage in it. Um, and so that one might actually have a very low impact. Whereas uh, some of these other ones, uh, I think uh, might I might have a uh, positive impact. So I I I think having some way of looking at what are the projects that have happened uh, yeah, and that would have been uh, impacted were these uh, uh, code changes in place is a a good way to quantify that.
Uh, Jordan and then Mike.
I I agree that you know, looking at this from a a a broader perspective and and doing the the research to determine if if there's a if there's a problem that that needs to be solved of all of these, as as Tiffin pointed out. Um, I I I I agree with that in principle. I guess what I'm what I'm trying to understand is uh, or what I'm thinking is doesn't putting it on the docket initiate that that research and and figuring and getting that data? I mean, because if we don't put it on the docket, then I just feel to to, I guess Carolyn's point, you know, it just kind of gets kicked, you know, all of these, all of these amendments kind of get kicked to the curb. Um, for maybe another year where I as I read them, I think they're all worthy of discussion. I would love to be able to consolidate them, a kind of counter to Carolyn's, but I'd love to be able to consolidate them into one docket item. Um, so, but yes, um, that that's that's what I'm trying to understand is if if we do, if we if we don't put them on the docket, how does the research get done?
Um, Mike?
I I appreciate Jordan's comment, um, but i- i- but if you put that together with Carolyn, the amendments we're talking about here are are designed to limit the ability of people to build certain features in their homes. Um, and whether you think that's to keep within the spirit of the code or not is a matter of opinion. Um, but I can only go from uh, I keep coming back to the notion that there should be at least a threshold for these kind of um, what I'll call one-off amendments to show that there is a problem of some sort, either um, identifiable with examples uh, or or experienced, and there are none that he has presented in two years. Um, and I can only, you know, identify, for example, um, my house, which is a one-story house, um, which I finished in 2019. And um, I have a clear story with a uh, sloped roof. Um, and so one end is uh, is over 12 feet. Uh, and the other end is at, you know, eight and a half feet, but the the point is that that his rule applied to one-story house would do nothing to reduce massing uh, of the scale that people are concerned about. Because my house is a one-story house, and it's not even nowhere as even with the partial clear story, it's nowhere near as tall as a two-story house. Um, so his his uh, code amendment is not only lacking in in an identifiable problem or examples, but it doesn't make any sense as applied to all homes because it would, it makes no sense as applied to a one-story home. Um, and it it in fact, uh, very much diminishes the ability of architects to develop um, you know, nice architectural homes on a small scale. My house is a small house. Uh, and so, and the same is true for his other amendment about the um, including the areas uh, outside outside covered porches. I have an area of outside covered porch, but my house is U-shaped, and it's within the U. So it it impinges not one iota upon my neighbors because it's well back from either the setbacks or the property line. Um, and so his his ideas are not very well-formed, and they appear to be chasing, they appear to be solutions in search of a problem. And and I think that's true of nearly all of his. And so I would reject them um uh, for that reason.
Yeah, I'll go to Carolyn and then Victor.
Um. Okay. So you know, there's been a state, some statements made that there are no problems that have been demonstrated demonstrated, or that he has not given examples. Now, again, we're talking in in rather vague terms about five or six specific requests here. So I find it almost impossible to have a serious discussion about any of what Dan's proposing. You know, trying to talk about them as if they're all one lump. Each one of his proposals does describe a problem, and the problem has to do, for example, with with bulk, or it has to do with whether someone's garage is in the front yard setback. Or um has to do with, you know, how many parking spaces are required so that their cars won't be parked on the street? I mean, each one of his proposals identifies a problem. Yet we're not talking about those problems. We're talking in generalities. It's true, a one-story house isn't particularly related to some of these these issues. But that one-story house is a rarity on Mercer Island. What we're mostly seeing is two and three-story houses where the Clara story, for example, uh, rule really made quite a difference. It wasn't what the planning commission recommended four years ago. The city council changed it at the last minute without really analyzing the impact. And um, so it it changed from a 10, which is a standard. Um, uh, I I Dan explains it better in his proposal, but the 10-foot, which would be the standard, was changed to a 12. So um, I don't think he needs to give you examples because in each case, he's identifying an entire a section of the code, which is affecting dozens, hundreds of homes that are being built. I mean, I don't see how collecting up those examples and showing you, here's a house that was built according to the code. He's suggesting to change the code because he doesn't think that those are being built appropriately to what he thinks that our community asked the council to do, you know, five years ago. I think they're worth considering one by one. Would.
Uh, okay, Victor?
Um, Allison, I'm not completely familiar with the history on this. But were the changes that uh, Dan is reacting to, or were these made five years ago, or were they made more recently? And are these changes basically a reaction to changes that the CPD made uh, prior to the docket process being put in place?
Um, I believe all of these items related to residential development standards were code amendments that were made in 2017 as a part of that big residential development standard update.
Tim? Ted?
Yeah, I I guess I wanted to clarify one thing. Uh, I mean, we're on the uh uh, proposed amendment number seven, that's talking about the clear story. Um, I if this were passed, uh, it wouldn't outlaw a 12-foot clear story. In fact, you found a single story, I think you probably, you have a 15 foot uh, or or higher uh, clear story, but it just means that a area that has um, a a height of 12 feet or more gets counted at 150% uh, when calculating the GFA. And a single-story house is probably not going to approach its limit of the GFA because it's a single story. Um, so I I I I want to make sure we're understanding what he's proposing here. Uh, I I think that uh, it wouldn't outlaw the house uh, that that, or at least what I'm hearing Commissioner Murphy uh, describe. Um, but I I think the what I'm trying to get at is um, the how do we and now a- analyze this? Do we analyze it by docketing it and looking at them each individually? Or do we analyze it by making it part of the overall uh, comp plan uh, review? Um, where we're going to be analyzing the effects of all the comp plan changes. Uh, and is it, does it make more sense to have it as part of that co- uh, comprehensive um, review? Or is it make it make more sense to uh, analyze each of these separately? And I'm still kind of on the fence between the two, so I make sure that we uh, uh, that we fully analyze what is being suggested here, um, and and consider it. I don't want it to get swept to the side of the road. Um, but I think that uh, if we docket it, then it'll happen sooner. Uh, the the analysis would happen sooner. Um, and if we uh, have it as part of the uh, larger comprehensive plan review, uh, it'll still happen, but it presumably uh, would be uh, with the potential change being in 2023 instead of 22. I think that's the key difference we're deciding here, right?
So uh, l- let me lend my uh, answer to that and then my comments. So um, the uh, I think you mean not comprehensive plan update, but the residential uh, code update that we're um, like the review of the residential code.
Thank you.
Um, and so the the plan as we currently have it on our work plan is for staff in early 2022, I believe. Allison, um, you kick me under the table if uh, virtually if this is incorrect, but early 2022 is when staff is um uh, planning to do the analysis portion of this. It is unfortunate. We've been talking about this for two years. Um, and it's unfortunate that we ran into this whole COVID thing that really disrupted a lot of what was uh, going on um, with the staff work plans, and it did in fact delay it. Um, so the short answer, as I understand it, Ted, is the analysis will be done um, in in early 2022, or at least, you know, relatively the first portion of 2022, we would begin evaluating that, and the process would likely take us into 2023 when we would actually have, as you know, going through the um, process of the residential design standards. It's not going to be a two, three meeting event. It'll be a a much longer and protracted uh, uh, exercise. And so it'll likely take us into 2023. The reality is, is if we docket this, we likely wouldn't do anything to evaluate it or to discuss it until after the staff has the information that they have in the first half of 2022. Anyway, we probably wouldn't bring this up until this point in time. In which case, it probably wouldn't be until early 2023 that we would end up taking any action anyway, because we would still want to get that information. So as I understand it, again, Allison, correct me if any of my analysis is incorrect from your perspective, but I'm not sure that docketing it buys us any additional speed uh, to the process. So that's number one. Number two, uh, getting back to just priorities. Uh, look, these may all very well warrant uh, change. But in the scope of the things that this city is dealing with right now, these are all inconsequential. And I understand that that might inflame some people that believe that the development in the town is um, still out of scale, but when I think about it in comparison to some of the other things that we're dealing with when it comes to everything from sound transit to our the state of our utilities and our and our everything from sound transit to our, the state of our utilities and our, and our water system and a lot of the other stuff that we're going to be reviewing, the sign code, uh, you know, all the other stuff that I know that, that we have in the long list of our queue. To me, this just doesn't meet the bar. The trees for me and, and item number one that we're going to move forward with, at least to me, there's a, uh, there's an irreversible effect of that and does warrant a, a, you know, expedient, uh, review. Uh, but in these cases, uh, like I get it and I've said this to Dan, uh, uh, like, I think they're all interesting things to discuss. It warrants looking at the information. We don't know what the impact fully of the changes are that we've had. And in the scope of all of the other things that we've had going on, I'm not sure these come anywhere close to filtering towards the top of urgency of what we need to look at. So that's my two cents. Carolyn.
I would request that in the city's analysis of how the code is functioning, that each one of these areas in which Dan has brought up be, uh, included in the analysis. What has been the, uh, effect of raising the Clara story? The, the ceilings in Clara story space from 10 to 12, how does that affect the, the exterior volume of a house, given the gross floor area that you're allowed to have? Or if we flip down the screen at some of the other ones, you know, what has been the impact of allowing smaller lots to, have, um, a break on their GFA or an ADU, um, incentive? What has been the impact of reduced parking requirements? You know?
Allison, I'll give you a chance to respond if you have any to that and then.
Um, I think that makes sense. Um, I believe that there would be a scoping discussion with the city council and perhaps with the commission as well. I don't know if Tim McCarg is still listening in. He will be the lead for this anal- analysis effort. And so I have not talked to him recently about what exactly this is going to look like, but I imagine there's going to be a scoping exercise first. And, you know, bringing in all of these questions that folks would like us to look at. And, you know, I think it makes sense to get all of those out on the table at the beginning. Tim, do you want to comment on that?
Uh, sure. My understanding of how the process is going to work is, you know, we're going to propose, um, a process, which both includes the public process, an outreach engagement process, um, in addition to the actual analytical and, uh, and technical evaluation. So we will put that together, um, and propose that to city council. City council will give us feedback and approve it. Um, and then those will, um, serve as our marching orders to complete that work.
Did that enter your question, Carolyn?
Yes, and I, I wanted to add one more thing, if I may, in response to Victor's question about context.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, the council embarked on a process in about 2015, I think, maybe it's 2016, to respond to a lot of feeling in the community and on the council that houses on Mercer Island are too big. So that was one of the driving factors in the process to analyze the residential development standards and make some changes. And the needle was indeed moved to a bit smaller. But a lot of the things Dan is bringing up are ways in which, you know, the overall, you know, reduction in gross floor area or bulk began to be sort of tweaked here and there in other locations of the code to allow those houses to become bigger again. So I think his feeling is that, you know, that is, is, is taking away from the integrity of the code and the intent that the community asked the council to address in 2015. And then that resulted in the code that was adopted in 2017. Almost every one of these things is one of those controversial items that tweaks the overall outcome.
And, and just a question for you, Carolyn, what do you, what exactly do you mean by tweak? Who's tweaking?
Okay, what I mean, what I mean is-
Is it the planning commission or is it someone else?
No, for example, the planning commission recommended that the gross floor area be counted as 150% if you exceeded a ceiling of 10 feet. Now, it was changed at the last minute, the council, you know, again, without much analysis to 12 feet. Was just thrown out there and adopted. Okay. So what that does, instead of the new house with the 12, the proposed 10-foot ceiling, counting their gross floor area 100%, one time essentially. If they raise the roof to ceiling to 12 feet, then that is counted as 150%. It was supposed to be counted as 150% as soon as you exceeded 10 feet. So what that does is it makes a taller ceiling. There's no penalty for a taller ceiling. You can build a two-story house with tall ceilings on both floors and only count that gross floor area, you know, at 100%. So that's an example of something that the planning commission recommended, but the council changed. But it's not, to my way of thinking, it's not so much a matter of whether the planning commission recommended it or the council changed it. The overall outcome of the code was that if you look in the most important places, the houses became smaller. But if you look over here and over here and over here and over here in the code, you found places where, oh, the smallness can be repealed and you can make it bigger again. So there were exceptions woven into the code. And this is most of what he's, he's appealing to. He's saying, take another look at these exceptions because they're being used, particular this one about the covered porches on the, on the ground floor. If, if those don't count, you know, I don't care what happens inside the house. Makes no difference to me where the floors are, the bathrooms or whatever. But when I'm walking by the house, if somebody has a, you know, a, a 900 square foot deck on their ground floor and that's, it's covered with a roof, to me, that just looks like a monstrous house. And there's been no relief from the bulk in the view of that house in the neighborhood. Because that doesn't count. If that deck is on the second floor, it counts. Then you have to include that in your gross floor area. So this is a way in which houses don't look any smaller than they used to. So it didn't fix anything.
Victor and then Mike.
So I appreciate the, the clarification, Carolyn. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and, and I'll say, you know, I, it, it sounds, it sounds like he's, what he's trying to do here is, is maintain the spirit of what, what was originally intended. I think at, at, at a very minimum, it's, it's worth docketing so that this can be properly discussed and debated and, and analyzed. So.
Mike.
You know, Carolyn has given a, a vigorous defense of Dan's approach, but, you know, it's a hypothetical example without any substance to it at this point. And, you know, the reality is that these things are not 900 square foot or thousand square foot decks. Um, you know, they're small spaces here and there, most likely. But in order to make that, at least as far as I know, in order to make that determination, the staff would need to get some information. I don't think it makes sense to go off chasing a problem based on something that he believes is, is an issue, but we have no record of it being an issue. And I don't think it, to go back to Dan's comment, you know, we've got an awful lot on our plate and if we're going to chase everybody's pet concern, um, we're never going to get anything done.
Kevin.
Yeah, listening to the discussion, I, I have a couple of comments. I guess my general observation is I walk around different neighborhoods all the time and, and I actually think that the new development is pretty well proportioned that I've seen in the last couple of years. So I personally don't just physically on the ground see a problem. I wasn't going to like go into all this discussion now, but since people are kind of discussing more. The other thing I was going to say is I think it's always important to balance, the idea that these are our community members that are trying to build their houses or remodel their houses. They're not like abstract people. And, um, you know, I think giving them whatever design flexibility we can without, um, you know, kind of compromising the spirit of the residential design standards makes a lot of sense. So I think, you know, I, I just think for every, you know, every time you say like, oh, we should look at this because maybe it's not quite what the code intended. You also have to consider that people, it's very expensive to develop here. There's a lot of, um, I, I guess it's a lot of requirements and I think you kind of have to balance what, you're going to put our community members through and make sure there's a good reason for doing that. I'd echo the resources, um, issue. And then, um, you know, you know, I think that's, I think that's primarily what it is. Like I, 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 I didn't want to come out and say there's not a problem because maybe there is and I don't know it, but I could say I haven't seen it in the last couple of years, walking around and looking at the new development.
All right, we've heard a lot. Any other, um, I'm just looking at the folks. Have we heard from you, Jordan, on this or?
Yeah, yeah, I, uh, I've gone back and forth, but I think I, I think I know where I land.
Okay. Carolyn, one last thing.
I think we are falling short of our duty to consider the submittals by one of our citizens. How can we justify not discussing the submittals of a citizen? We have taken six or seven things and spoken about them in vague terms. For as much as the time we've done that, we could have gone over each one, one by one.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, any other last, uh, comments before, uh, I ask for a consensus on whether or not we want to move any of these forward? Okay. Hearing, uh, no additional comments. Please signify if you are in favor of moving these five items, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 12 forward to the proposed docket. Okay, I have two. Any other folks? Okay, seeing none, uh, we will not move it forward. Please keep in mind that, uh, both the, uh, applicant, uh, as well as others, you're welcome to petition the council to change, uh, to change, change their mind on, on the recommendation that we sent to them. So. Yes, Carolyn.
You know, I would like to make a motion that we consider Dan Thompson's proposals one by one. We've taken a vote on whether to docket them all in a big lump, you know, and I guess that failed. But I would move that we, um, consider them one by one at this time.
All right, according to Robert's rules, we have a motion. Is there a second to consider these items one by one?
All second.
Okay. Any discussion or deliberation on, I'm, I'm gonna turn to Andrea from a parliamentary. If we take a vote, we're just going to be voting on whether or not we then go back and consider them one by one.
I would like to ask Allison a question. This would be under discussion, I hope.
Yep.
How can we tell a citizen who has submitted a proposed docket item that we have processed their submittal if we have not discussed the item that they submitted? Are we in arrears for not doing what we were supposed to do at this meeting if we don't discuss these items?
I mean, I think they, they have been discussed in a group, but I think they have been discussed and evaluated based on the criteria that we showed on the screen earlier in the meeting. I, I don't think there's a, a process problem there.
I, I haven't heard what anyone thinks of the-
So Carolyn, let me, let me ask you this question, Carolyn. What, what, what do you, I, I don't get what you're trying to get at by taking these one by one. I mean, look, I'll, I'll run through it. I think we know what the votes are going to be. Like, I'll run through them one by one, but I'm, I don't understand what, what different outcome you're looking for, given the conversation that we've had from the, from the group.
Okay, I'll tell you what, what I think it is. I think we have denied Dan Thompson the deliberation over each one of his proposals because we have not discussed them. We have not discussed back and forth the parking one or the driveway one or this one or we've just had a general conversation about the idea of making changes in the development code. So, so I just don't feel we have completed our deliberation on these items.
Ted.
So, uh, Chair, I, uh, call the question as to, uh, taking a vote on whether we should discuss these one by one.
Okay. Hearing, uh, Vice Chair Weinberg has called a vote. Um, Andrea, do you want to do a roll call?
Yes, Chair, I can do that.
And we are, uh, voting in favor, a yes vote is to evaluate, uh, each one of these individually.
Commissioner Friedman?
No.
Chair Hubbell?
No.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
No.
Commissioner Reshish?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
No.
Vice Chair Weinberg?
No.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, hearing the results of that, um, we'll move, uh, that all five of these be, not included as a part of the docket. I think what we need now, Allison, do we need actually a, a motion for the final docket to be moved forward to the city council? So if I could, um, recap, we will be moving forward items one, three, four, 13, 14, 15, and 16 with a, uh, notice of consideration as separate items uh, at, in the future. Items five and six as an, uh, accessory, uh, note to the council. Is there a, a motion to move that docket forward?
So moved.
By Commissioner Weinberg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Murphy. Any further comments or discussion?
Could you, could you, um, state the intent one more time, please?
Sure, the, the motion will be to move items one, three, four, 13, 14, 15, and 16 as recommendations to the council for docketing with the, call it a- call it a, uh, a, a men, uh, uh, accessory notice that items five and six, we believe, should be considered separately outside of the docketing process.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no other, uh, comments, uh, Andrea, um, would you like to call, uh, a vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Raishich?
Um, no.
Vice Chair Weinberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Commissioner Boatsman?
No.
Chair Hubbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mur- Murphy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Andrea. All right, thank you, um, uh, for all of the, uh, discussion and commentary there. I know that was a lot to, um, get through. Allison, we will move to, uh, Deputy Director's report.
All right, um, just a reminder on scheduling. We've got a meeting next week to, um, finish up the review and recommendation on the, the town center, commercial recommendation. And then our next meeting after that will be November 17th, followed by December 15th. Andrea, I feel like there's one more thing I should be mentioning. Do you remember?
Yes, we wanted to touch base on the volunteer hours that we have recently been made aware that we were supposed to be collecting the hours that you guys spend, um, working on planning commission items. Um, we realized that we're asking you to go back retroactively, so please just give us your best estimate. Times our list, start times and end times are listed in the minutes, so you can use that to gather time you spent, um, sitting in the meetings. Um, and then just your best guess of how much time you've spent preparing for meetings or asking questions or any of that stuff.
Victory, have a question?
How exactly does labor and industries think we're going to injure ourselves in this process?
It's kind of, it's, it's for all volunteers. So it's a, any volunteers that do any volunteer work for the city, um, we have to be reporting the hours on. It's a fair question. I had the same question.
I just like, my carpal tunnel, my carpal tunnel is acting up.
Know, knowing our luck, Victor, in the next two years, they're going to start taxing our volunteer time, so. Sorry, I'm just, I'm just bitter about the long-term care thing. Sorry, uh, Ted, go ahead.
How far back do you want us to go? So this has been a few years.
Just, we're just going back to the beginning of 2021.
Oh, okay.
And then going forward, you can use that kind of same template to track your hours. Um, and while the staff will be collecting those from you quarterly. And thank you for going back and retroactively plugging in those hours for us. Our HR people will be very happy.
Excellent, anything else from you, Allison?
That's all I've got for tonight.
No, uh, planned absences, I think, uh, Tiffen, you mentioned you're not going to be here next week, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, any other, um, absences next week? I just want to make sure we have a quorum since I know we're going to be going through the, what are we going through next week?
Town Center.
Thank you. It was either that or the sign code. I'm like, with, which one is swimming around in my head? But the sign code's already done, so it couldn't be that one. Great, uh, any, uh, general announcements or communications from the group? All right, hearing none, uh, our next meeting is next week, the third of November at 6:00 PM. Uh, so we will see, uh, all of you minus, uh, Tiffen then. And, uh, with no other business before the planning commission, uh, please remain on the line. Andrea will terminate the call and it is 9:35 in the PM and the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.